The best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence. I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of November 10th. Join us for the Hanger II ribbon cutting at the Kansas City Lee Summit Regional Airport on November 13th at 2:00 PM, located at 2720 Northeast Hagan Road. Explore the impressive 46,000-square-foot facility featuring aircraft storage, office space, first-class amenities for aviation customers, an observation deck, FBO operations, and the Summit Tech's Aerospace Academy. Looking for a fun night out with friends or someone special? Green Street is hosting Adult Night Out on Friday, November 14th at 7:00 PM. Enjoy a step-by-step paint night with a non-alcoholic dirty soda bar. This event is for those 18 and older and is free to attend. Painting materials will be provided. Stay up to date with new events at greenstreetls.com. The city is seeking a systems analyst to drive the performance and reliability of its Enterprise Resource Planning System. In this role, you'll plan, design, and deploy information systems that support city operations, ensure system stability, and optimize performance across networked software and associated systems. Apply today at lspeople.net. And a reminder, city facilities will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th for Veterans Day. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Keeping our city beautiful is a collaborative effort for all citizens. The City of Lee Summit supports these efforts with a set of guidelines or ordinances. And the city's Neighborhood Services Team helps put those guidelines into practice. These guidelines ensure grass stays trimmed, fences are maintained, home exteriors are kept up, and much more. We can all help out by first making sure our property meets these guidelines. If you notice potential violation on a neighbor's property, first check the guidelines on the city's website. If it is a violation, the next step is to communicate with your neighbor directly. If that is not possible, or if the problem persists, it can be reported through LS Connect. LS Connect is an online platform for submitting issues to the city. You can access it on the city website or by downloading the app through your mobile device's App Store. Once you submit an issue, it is reviewed by the Neighborhood Services Team. A Neighborhood Services Officer will then visit the site. For any violations found, the Neighborhood Services Officer will leave a notice and speak with the property owner if possible. The officer's goal is to help the property owner solve or abate the problem as quickly as possible. After a 10-day period, the officer will inspect the site to see if the issue has been abated. Normally, by this point, the issue has been resolved. If not, depending on the type of issue, an extension could be granted, or the city might fix the problem at the owner's expense. In rare cases, if all other measures have been applied, the issue will be resolved in the municipal court. Neighborhood Services Officers work hard to resolve problems quickly and positively. They are here to support the community as we work together to keep our city beautiful.
Mayor Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions. I know I've gotten a few questions about the plans. So I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge. I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee Summit. They have a football field set up inside these cones are their football fields. Our two-car garage is gonna, we're gonna bring the driveway back through here, and it's gonna go right here. And then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens because we're going to end up, we're gonna be eating the eggs, and I would like to use them for meat. So don't treat them as your pets." Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets, and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown, and we love living downtown. These are my children. The first one's Lincoln, and Amira, and Sophia, and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community. And all of the kids get together, and they play basketball, and we like to walk to the farmer's market. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The farmer's market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off, and I was going shopping at the farmer's market right behind Lee Summit Elementary. And I was teary-eyed because she was my first, and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt, and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone. She gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school. How are you guys doing? Doing well. How are you?
Very good.
A lot of the farmers there, my kids have, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee Summit in general. I love that it still has a small-town feel while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee Summit Elementary, and a lot of their teachers live downtown, and a lot of the business owners from downtown live downtown. So when we're out walking downtown, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five, and then we moved to the United States, and I've lived in Lee Summit since. Oh, a lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom. And I feel like I was essentially raised by my community and being on council. And it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me.
I say your name.
I'm Mia Pryor.
We follow my square.
You saw my square.
Tonight, this is the qualifications.
It's the April 2022. The election process was fun. I got to go door-to-door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door, and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Is it on? Hi, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mia Pryor. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I have one on. Can you not? I love being a council rep for District 1. I know everyone says this, but District 1 is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District 1. I love that community. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee Summit. I love the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap, bridge that gap between constituents and the city. And we're the voice of our constituents, and we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are, what their ideas are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. So my big priorities are public safety. That's always one of my top priorities. I've always wanted to make sure that first responders were supported. I think that that's super important to me and to many in our city. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee Summit. I wanted to influence the type of businesses we get here and the type of activities there are to do for our families. If we're gonna continue to grow downtown, how important it is to focus on people that already live here and the infrastructure we already have in place.
Our first presentation tonight is gonna be Assistant City Manager Ryan Elam, who's going to talk about that very exciting farmer's market plaza.
But I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly-through video of that. That's really the best way to kind of get a good sense of what this will look like in the near future.
To see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from City Hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people into what the farmer's market's gonna be, but also everything else that goes along with that development. You wanna hold it? Grab it. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Have a good rest. I'm just an average person in Lee Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that, that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Yeah, I'm not a politician. I'm just a mom that cares.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Thursday, November 13th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Can we get a roll call attendance, please?
Ed Yarrington. Sherri Fraser.
Present.
Jake Lovelace. Terry Trafton.
Present.
Dana Arth.
Present.
Jessica Grenau.
Present.
Tanya Johniford. Chip Tuzinski.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call vote on that or a vote on that, please?
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, can we get a vote on that, too, please?
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have public comments. This is a section for public comments. Do we have any public comments regarding the Planning Commission business in general? Not, not applying to any of these applications tonight? Okay, I don't see any. So we'll go ahead and start with our first public hearing. Application PL 2025-242, rezoning from Ag to R1, 3222 Southwest Pryor, Engineering Solutions applicant. Would all those planning to testify on behalf of this application or to speak on behalf of it stand up and be sworn in at this time?
I promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt Slisch, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. With me this evening, I have the Dills as well, the owners of the property that we're gonna talk about tonight, so if you have any questions for them. Generally, the site is located north of 150 Highway and Pryor Road. So 150 Highway is here. Pryor Road comes north. This is Pryor Ridge subdivision, or Pryor Meadow subdivision, and they're just on the south side. So they actually own the acreage directly to the south. And when this parcel became available, they purchased it for the purposes in hope of taking and subdividing off the house after they redo it, remodel it, and then taking the vacant acreage in the back and joining that to their site. And so that's the purpose and intent of this, this whole area. So generally speaking, there's seven, eight acres of the, the site. There's about three acres that we want to rezone in the front to R1, leaving the back as Ag. If this is approved, then this will follow up with a minor plat that will combine the Ag piece to their piece at the end. So the site is in the comp plan as a residential category one, so kind of a low-density residential use. Currently, it's zoned Ag, and there's a residential R1 component just directly to the north, so it seems to be a comparable zoning request. This is what we're talking about on the site. There's currently an existing house that is there that they're currently remodeling, an existing barn and a couple of little shed structures. And their plan is essentially about 30 feet, 25 feet on the west side of that existing structure is to create the property line, so we would rezone this front portion to R1. It does have city sanitary sewer available, and it's already connected to the house as well as city water and access to Pryor Road. So as you're looking, there are two access points to the site off of Tierra Lane in the subdivision. That is a dead-end street that currently accesses the property from the backside. And then the front portion of the property, they have a drive off of Pryor Road sitting just to the south side of their site, sitting down in here. So we did have, hold a neighborhood meeting. I think we had two residents that showed up and just generally asked why, afraid that there was gonna be development. They were very thrilled, I believe, to hear that it's just simply a subdivision of property and a rezoning on that side. I don't see them here, but they may be here today to have a conversation. But generally, I think we left the neighborhood meeting with a consensus of favorable with it. And then just kind of have an idea of, updated what they're doing on that side of the house. Is there taking an old ranch-style house that was split into many different levels and actually making it a functional house that I think will be a great improvement for the area? So with that, we will stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 12.
Exhibit A, 1 through 12 noted and entered into the record.
Thank you. Good evening. Pierce Polian, Planning Intern. I'm here to present the application for the rezoning of the portion of 322 Southwest Pryor Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone the eastern 2.98 acres of the 322 Pryor Road from Ag to R1. So that's the section outlined here in the red. The applicant wants to split the property and sell off the portion outlined here in the red. Since the minimum lot size for Ag, for the Ag District is 10 acres, splitting the lot requires a rezone, so the property can be replatted and remain a legal lot. The remaining of the, the remaining back portion of the lot will need to be combined with the property to the south. And there are no proposed changes to the dwelling, site alterations, or development plans for the property at this time. The property is currently zoned Ag and is surrounded by R1 to the north and, and the Pryor Meadow subdivision. There's Ag to the south, and Ag and planned mixed-use to the east with Southwest Pryor Road and the Pryor Ridge subdivision to the east and to the west. It is currently zoned R1, but is undeveloped as of now. According to the Ignite Conference of Plan, the subject area is designated for low-density, low-intensity residential. The requested rezoning would be appropriate and compatible, compatible district for the surrounding area. This section requesting rezoned is already developed with a single-family home. On October 9th, the applicants did host a neighborhood meeting. Two members of the public attended, and they discussed the rezoning process. Staff received no comments, emails, or phone calls in favor or in opposition of the project. So with the approval of the, of the condition that the rezoning will not take effect until a plat has been submitted and approved and recorded, the application will meet the requirements of the UDO. If you all have any questions, I am here to answer them as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Polian.
Yes.
Do we have any public comments on this application? If so, please come to the microphone and, and state your name and address for the record. But I don't know if you've been sworn in.
No, I haven't, but I will. Teresa Volenweider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. The setbacks on R1 are pretty, pretty small. I didn't hear when, um, it's gonna, I didn't hear minor plat. Is it gonna be a minor plat? And my guess is it probably is gonna be a minor plat. Does anybody know? Minor plat? Is that what it's gonna be? If it's gonna be a minor plat, um... There's, I, I don't think this is looking like it's going to be compatible with the other property that's there. And my guess is, you know, the neighborhood meeting people don't understand that R1 means that that lot could be divided further and further and further into smaller and smaller components because they could reach those setbacks fairly easily. And that's one thing I think that the public doesn't realize when you go from Ag to R1 or to RLL, that those setbacks get pretty darn small. The other thing I'm concerned about is it's zoned Ag. It's got quite a few buildings on it. You take it to R1. R1 doesn't allow any outbuildings on it, and for sure, it doesn't allow big outbuildings. Only Ag allows big outbuildings. So you're taking a, a property right now that conforms with the buildings that are on it to something that's not going to conform to an R1 or anything residential because the only thing residential allows is a small shed, which I think is 250 square feet. I think, I see problems here. And the people around there, the neighborhood people, probably don't understand and haven't dug as deep into this stuff as I have. So yeah, I think it's a really bad idea to go to R1 from Ag.
Time's up. All right, we will, I'm gonna turn it over to Planning Commission for any questions. I don't see, do I see anybody? Commissioner Benbrook.
Yeah, this would probably be for staff. Let's just go through the confirmation process on what's allowed in R1 with the outbuildings and whether it's gonna be a minor plat or a full plat.
So the, the applicant can choose whether it be a minor plat or a full plat? The easiest route would be that minor plat, since it is just two, two lots. We can do that administrative through a minor plat process. Accessory structures allowed in the R1 do include detached garages, sheds. There's, there's quite a bit. So the existing structures that are out there now were legally developed at the time under a different set of regulations, so they will remain in a legal, non-conforming status moving forward.
Okay. Do we need any kind of, I don't know, stipulations with regard to these buildings? Or is it all good, just to move forward as is?
It'd be good to move forward as is.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right, I don't see any more questions for the commission. I'll close public hearing, and if we don't have any comments, I will look for a motion on this application.
Chair, I move to recommend approval of application PL 2025-242, rezoning from Ag to R1, 3222 Southwest Pryor, Engineering Solution applicant.
Second.
Can we get a vote on that, please?
Ed Yarrington.
Yes.
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The motion has passed. For, just for, I need to ask a question. You did get, you've recorded Commissioner Yarrington as being present. I assume you did. He came in late. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. All right, we will move on to application PL 2025-243, rezoning from R1 to Ag. We will move on to application PL 2025-243, rezoning from R1 to ag, 1650, 1660 and 1700 Northeast Tudor Road, Engineering Solutions LLC, applicant. With all those planning to give testimony or speak on behalf of this application, would, if you would please stand up at this time and be sworn in?
Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Schliss.
All right. Good evening. Matt Schliss, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Leesville, Missouri. And again, with me, I have the owner. If you have any questions that I can't answer, we're gonna go the exact opposite way. So on this one, we have a parcel of ground that's 30-plus acres, generally located northeast of Tudor and Todd George. It has been in the, her family since the 60s. Somewhere along the way, the city did a city-driven rezoning from agricultural to R1, and her family just wasn't aware of it. So they have no intentions of doing any development or any, um, need for the R1 zoning, and her preference would be to keep it as is. And so currently, there's a couple addresses and a couple little parcels kind of broken out into it. The intent is to rezone it from R1 to ag, and then we're gonna minor plat and create one single lot that she can then pass on to her son and continue to have the family, um, property. So the site on the Ignite comp plan, again, is a residential low-density, and there is existing, uh, residential structure on the property. Currently, it is zoned R1 with agricultural directly to the south. I'm gonna bring up a couple comments, just because I promised a couple of the neighbors we would in the neighborhood meeting, because the question was, is we don't do a lot of downzonings. And so the question was, is what's the benefit for her of going from residential to ag? And the comment I gave them is there really isn't a lot of benefit, other than she believes and feels better of it being an agricultural property on the size that it is, so this is her opinion of want. And so we told them in uses agriculture at R1, I would provide a better understanding because of that night I was going off the top of my head. So agricultural zoning district is a very low-density residential development, similar to what R1's gonna state. A number of the same uses, there's some larger setbacks on agricultural use, there's a few other allowances for some barns and sheds. R1, again, is single-family residential to provide low-density single families, so similar zoning use, similar ideas. So then we went through and we provided just some information on lot sizes. Agricultural obviously has a much lower density. Lot sizes, frontages are a lot larger. So all the things that I had mentioned at neighborhood meeting, but again, I just commented to the neighbors that I promised I would show them in the neighborhood meeting, uh, proof that I was not, uh, fibbing. And then height of the structure is exactly the same on that side. Uses on agricultural versus a residential are basically the exact same with a few agricultural uses allowed that are not allowed in the R1, um, district, but those are all conditional type uses that would require some more planning, some more operation things to come back through, city staff and through you guys to see. So again, as I told them, there's really no intention of creating a farm or operation. It's gonna operate exactly as it does today. She just simply wants the residential designation. So as I said, we did hold a neighborhood meeting. I think we had six maybe at that meeting. Um, most of the conversation was just in that discussion of what agricultural versus residential differences were, and I did a lot of that from my head, so that's, again, why I brought some of that stuff up. Um, there was some concerns over uses of chemicals or farming operation-type things, and I explained to her that there's no intention of creating a farm or a crop field or any other pieces of it, it's just simply taking the zoning. And then overall, I think the neighbors, again, were very happy to hear that there's not development going on, it's just gonna be maintained. So with that, we're here for questions as you need us.
Thank you.
Good evening. Adair Bright, Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 12.
Exhibit A, 1 through 12 noted and entered into the record.
The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R1 to ag to allow for the consolidation of the four existing parcels, which are outlined here in yellow, and the greater subject property is outlined in red. The property is located just northeast of the intersection of Todd George Parkway and Northeast Tudor Road. There is an existing single-family dwelling, let's see where's the mouse here, on this parcel here, and then there are two accessory dwellings down here in the southwesternmost parcel. The rezoning is being requested, um, because the R1 district does limit the quantity of garages or sheds to just one, whereas the ag district does not limit the quantity, provided that the maximum lot coverage of 60% is not reached. Uh, no new development is being proposed at this time. The property is currently zoned R1 with the northwest and east surrounding properties, um, consisting of single-family dwellings in Prairie Lake just to the north. To the south is the eastern watershed pumping facility. Per the future land use map and the Ignite Comprehensive Plan, the subject property is designated for low-intensity, low-density, large-lot, single-family homes. And this project does support the strong neighborhoods and housing choice focus area by meeting the objective to preserve and protect existing housing stock. The neighborhood meeting was held on October 9th, and the applicant did report back that some of the questions and topics of concern did cover agricultural zoning allowances, chemicals for agricultural uses, and just the general development of the land, which is not being proposed. With the condition of approval outlined here and in the staff letter, the application meets the goals of the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and the requirements of the UDO, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this application? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Teresa Volenwider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road.
I don't believe she was sworn in.
I swore in at the...
She was.
When I did the other one.
Oh, yeah, she's...
For the other one, but not for this public hearing?
No, you're right. You didn't stand up for the application swearing in.
Teresa Volenwider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. One of the concerns I have, because the use wasn't mentioned and I didn't see it listed on Matthew Schliss's, um, thing there, was ball fields. You have a lot of residential there with small lots, a lot of those houses right there, right next to this, uh, R1 property that's gonna become, um, ag. And on R1, it would be probably next to impossible to get a ball field on there. Uh, but that would be something that would definitely affect the value of those residential R1 homes there. The other comment I have is that I've seen, um, in the public records quite often where you all put that the rezoning doesn't take effect until after the plat has been recorded. And I have seen it where the plat might not get recorded until two years later, and the building or anything that's gonna occur has occurred. The rezoning, you know, I guess has occurred, um, so that's my other concern, is who's watching to make sure that these recordings actually take place before the document is signed by the mayor that says this property has been rezoned? Who are you trusting in the city to make sure that that gets done?
Thank you. I'm going to ask if we have any questions on the commission?
I do.
Commissioner Frazier?
Am I to understand correctly that it was originally ag, but then, sorry, it was originally ag, but then went at some point to R1? And if that's the case, can you tell me how long ago that was?
I'll defer to staff. I don't think that we have found the date, but I think it was in the 80s or in that range. You have a date? Perfect. I'm not guessing.
No, I just came to say, I also couldn't find anything. We looked through all the files, um, and it, we just couldn't find anything based off of how they used to show the properties with just a parcel map, and there wasn't really a lot of context to be able to place myself there.
Okay.
But we do know it was annexed in the 60s, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so the conversation that Julia remembers is in the 60s, it was annexed into the city, and then somewhere in the 80s range, it was to promote the development of residential, kind of a big swath of area was created as residential area to start and promote residential. And so if you look north of there, a lot of single-family development has occurred in that area. So she thinks that might be, but we hadn't found the exact date.
Okay.
Commissioner Trafton?
I think, okay, so I guess this is a question for staff, just to clarify that we wanna go from R1 to ag to consolidate the parcels. But there's really nothing stopping them to start farming on it once it's ag, right?
That would be an allowed use.
That would be an allowed use. So essentially, I think one of the neighborhood comments was, are they gonna start farming on it? No, but they might change their mind, like, 10 years from now or something. And then there's really nothing to stop them from doing that, right? On those 29 acres?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was, um, I was just curious about why. I understand, like, ag gives you more flexibility with what you do with the land, and they're the landowner, and they should be able to do that. So I was just curious about all that. Okay. Thanks. I think you answered my question. Good job.
I don't see any more questions from the commission, so we will close public hearing, and I will look for any comments or a motion on this application.
Chair? I move to recommend approval of application PL 2025-243, rezoning from R1 to ag, 1650, 1660, and 1700 Northeast Tudor Road, Engineering Solutions LLC, applicant.
Second.
Can we get a vote on that, please?
Ed Yarrington?
Yes.
Sherri Frazier?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grenau?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. The vote has passed, and before I move on to the next application, I wanna make a point of order. Ms. Volenwider, Volenswiner, um, you had your opportunity to speak at the microphone. Please do not speak out after you've sat down. We need to have an orderly meeting. All right. I wanna move on to application PL 2025-249, Preliminary Development Plan, View High Sports Complex Inflatable Soccer Dome, 3301 Northwest Ashurst Drive, Engineering Solutions LLC, applicant. And we have Mr. Schliss here again. Oh, wait a minute, I need to swear everybody in. You're all standing up. Okay. Thanks.
All right.
We're ready for your presentation.
All right. Now, on this one, we're gonna throw a Sidewinder. We have a person online. Is he online? Has anybody checked to make sure? Maybe? So we have the dome guru available that could only be in, he was out of state, so.
I do not have him online.
Okay. Can you guys check and see if you can find Tom? Okay. So he is our dome expert that was unable to make it today. He's in Washington State, but he is the guy that can talk through any engineering discussions or anything related to it. He's given me a lot of information, so I'll give you a, a brush at it, and then if there's other questions, please feel free. So, um, again, with me tonight, I have, uh, the owner, I have the general contractor, hopefully online at some point, I have a dome guy, and then you have me. So this is a site that we talked about a few months back, um, south side of the Summit Church, east side of View High, south of Chipman Road, 15 acres. So when we went through and did the approval of the, the original project, we did a PDP for a sports facility with an outdoor field. And as the guys have gotten into this, there's a ton of interest, like, I think everybody kinda thought that there would be a lot of excitement for it, which drove us to the idea of, is there a way to make the outdoor field become accessible year-round? And so that's what this is specifically related to, is making that outdoor field accessible year-round. So to do that, it is a special use permit and then an amendment or a preliminary development plan, because we have a modification for the height of the temporary structure. So Ignite comp plan shows this area as the commercial area. We rezoned that portion south of Ashurst and one little lot north of Ashurst on the east side of View High to CP2 for the development of the sports facility. If you recall, the View High view, looking back, all the existing vegetation along View High, along the south side, along the east side, will all be maintained and left as is to try to create a screen. Uh, this is on the east side of the site in the development, looking back to the west, so again, a lot of mature vegetation. For reference, this is the approved plan that we worked on. It's 150,000 square foot of an activity facility with 30,000 square foot of some offices and sports rehab-type spaces. So in there, we have a full-size soccer field, we have pickleball courts, we have volleyball, basketball courts. Outdoor, we have some pickleball courts on the easterly side, and then we had shown an outdoor, full-size FIFA-regulated soccer field on the east side of the site. Now, this soccer field is what we're back to talk about, because when we did it, we understood that there would be excitement for it, there would be use and desire to want it. It's a turfed field, it'll be able to get utilized through a majority of the months. As we started talking to these, um, sports soccer facilities that wanted to use it, they said they'll participate on that field any day that is 32 degrees and above. So lights that we have outside will be allowed to illuminate that field from the hours of nighttime till about 10 o'clock, is what I think we left it on, is what the city code requires or allows. And so they're anticipating utilizing this field a majority of the days of the year. If you look at the weather forecast, it tells you, on average, Kansas City averages 340 days of 32 degrees or better. So there's a number of days that field can get used, but what the limit is, is the moisture, is the wind, is the what happens if having this dome, having this facility be able to be closed in, provides an opportunity that no other place in the region has, of having two completely controlled indoor FIFA-regulated sized fields. So the indoor field inside the building obviously works all year long, every piece of it. This outdoor field will be utilized as a covered dome or as anticipated covered dome from November to March. All other times of the year, it would be an open field, just like we originally talked about. So, all of that I already jumped through. So the idea is that this provides the opportunity for these sports soccer guys to have this facility with a lot better use and a lot better opportunities to be able to schedule games, schedule tournaments and schedule practices. This facility, as we kinda did it even with the design of that site, is the location of that soccer field was specifically chosen to be kind of out of the way. It's down in kind of a hill in a valley, it is a distance away from the residential, it's a distance away from the church, to the south is agricultural undeveloped. And so as we start to look at distances to where we are, we're almost 1,000 foot from any major roadway. We're essentially 300 feet from the residential houses, there's three of them that are adjacent to us on the easterly side. We're essentially 475 or 500 feet from the southernmost point of the church, we're 550 feet from the barn, there's actually a house up here, from that existing residential facility. So again, when we were doing the original plan, the idea of how we picked that soccer field, because we had a number of go-back-and-force of where did that want to be, the idea for noise, for light, for activity used to try to keep everybody contained on-site, that's why that location was done. And again, that's why we think the dome makes sense there, is because that facility is gonna be less visible, obviously, than it would be on the front or the west side of the site. Again, just for reference, this is the landscape plan that we approved, a number of landscape plan things that will be in addition to the existing vegetation that will remain along the west, the south and the east portion of the site. So we've tried to provide, uh, a sightline study in looking at if you were sitting on View High Drive, looking easterly, so as you were sitting on View High Drive, there are some existing trees, but the idea being, obviously, wintertime, November to March, those leaves are gone, the sightline will come across and skim the top of that dome. So you will see the top of that dome, but you won't feel it's full perspective and, and look at that side of it. From the residential side to the east, again, you'll have the houses, you'll have some blur, but again, the vegetation on the backside, you'll be above it. We believe that you're gonna see the top portion of that dome from any visible piece. Now, obviously, if you're on Ashurst, driving along the edges of it, you're gonna see the dome in full effect, but that's why it's that short side of that dome, is our opinion. We tried to lay in the Summit Church, which is sitting up there to the north, so again, if you were up on Chipman Drive, looking back south, outside of where the building is, you're not going to see, again, the dome facility on that, that south end of the facility or that site. Now, noise was a big thing we talked about last time we were here. A lot of discussions of pickleball and, um, soccer fields and noise, what would go to the neighbors. So we ran through the decibel discussions and talked about, at this point, a soccer field or a game would generate somewhere in that neighborhood of about 90 decibels. As we propagate that all the way to the property line, that dissipates down to about 40 decibels. As we propagate that all the way to the property line, that dissipates down to about 40 decibels. The benefit of that dome is essentially that eliminates and removes all of that soccer field noise because the dome is going to entrap that noise inside of it. So the only noise you're going to have from this facility is the air handling unit that is pushing the pressured air into that dome, which operates at about 60 decibels at its peak. 60 decibels at its peak then generates a noise level on the property line of about 30. So our opinion is, with the existing trees, with the existing vegetation, the limited amount of noise, the dome is actually going to create a better noise reduction over the site than what is there when the open field is there. So, some conversations that, if we can get Tom here, I'll go through the pieces of it, we think is a benefit to this side of it. The dome is a design by professional engineer, sealed to a standard specification, just because it's temporary structure doesn't mean it has anything less. So it is a truly designed and approved, reviewed structure that will be on-site. The air handling units, because we had some questions to him of what happens if, you know, what happens if somebody punches a hole in it, what happens if, whatever. So the air handling units are designed to create 120% of the required air pressure inside that dome so that if somebody leaves the door open, if somebody stabs it in the side of it, if whatever happens, that air handling unit can keep up enough to keep that dome in complete operation throughout any problems of it. Additionally, there's a backup power and a backup fan system. So if power goes out, fan goes down, there's another system that runs on that side of it. Additionally, the design of the dome is required to have an emergency egress plan so that the dome, as it deflates in any kind of an emergency situation, is required to keep the dome elevated to a certain height to allow for free access of everybody outside, inside the facility, to get outside within allowance of how many people are supposed to be inside of it. We had some conversations with him on the install, you know, so you're talking about every November and every March, we're going to take this up and put this down, is this a construction site every year? Essentially, it takes about a week. So I'll show you some pictures here in a minute of what it looks like. It's very heavily manually labor at the beginning, but essentially, it takes about a week to take down, it takes about a week to put up. The facility is put into containers and stored off-site, so it's something that completely goes away. The domes are all equipped with bad weather sensors, so if it gets cold, the dome heats up. If it gets windy, the dome pressurizes to become more rigid so that it can handle that flexible wind. If it becomes to where you had snow load or something on top of it, again, it pressurizes and heats up to help deflate, or to push that snow off that side of it. So the system itself is designed to handle and be prepared for any of those situations that may happen. The dome is constructed in a two-layer system, so you have an outer layer and inner layer, and I have samples of it, so you guys can actually see what it is. The benefit of what that does is that if something happens to one of the layers, like the outside layer gets a hole in it, the interior layer has an area of air that will actually come to help to seal that up, to slow down the depression to while they need to get it fixed and those pieces of it. The fabrics itself is, has a fire retardant chemical in it, so if the dome actually did catch on fire, it would start to put itself out to assist the fire department in preventing any kind of a large-scale burn or any problem side of it. So again, that's my rundown. Tom is supposed to be here that can answer any of your other questions that come out of that if I can't make it through it. So just so you start to see it, because I was interested in trying to figure out how this works, there's a number of panels, as you start to see, I've numbered the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, there's actually like eight panels on this specific dome that go up. They all get laid out, manually rolled out, set up and kind of situated to where they're supposed to be in the world. Then they have mechanical fasteners, so actually bolts, oops, bolts and metal plates that actually stick together to hold it down. This flap then is overlaid over top of that metal fastening system and actually heated and melted onto the other panel itself, so it becomes in a complete system. Once it's all sudden done, all the panels become to act as one. At all the door, all the air handling systems, you have a frame that has a rigid construction where you have the bolt system that'll actually go in and again, have the same mechanical system that connect to it. And then this is your typical air handling system, where you see your air handler, you see your heater, you see your backup generator. So this system will be on-site. We talked to some of the neighbors, we're going to position that air handling unit towards our building, farthest we can possibly away from the neighbors, so even though we don't believe the noise will become an issue, we're going to try to position that on the far west side of that facility once it's all designed, so it'll stay completely down and remove any other noise that potentially, or reduce the noise as much as possible to them on that side. So, we started looking around town, just to see where they are. You know, up north, of course, they exist, because up north, where you have colder climates, we've got to extend the soccer season, you got to extend the playing season, so it's very easy to see them up north. Down here, pickleball and tennis courts have them all over the place. So as you start to see, this is Woodside Tennis Club, Volleyball Beach down in Martin City, Kansas City Country Club, Hallbrook Country Club, Mission Hills Country Club. And what you'll start to see, Elite Tennis, so what you'll start to see is in every one of these, they're well within residential mixes. So the Elite Tennis facility is butted up next to some townhome-type units. Mission Hills Country Club's a little more isolated out in the center of the golf course, but as you get a look at Hallbrook, Hallbrook has single-family residential just to the south side of it. Again, as we start to look at Kansas City Country Club, again, there's residential right next to it. So as we've looked and found these, there's numerous more opportunities of these, of sites that are in the city that exist that just don't get noticed, I think, because it's something that is an oddity, but it has a shorter-term timeframe that it goes on to that side of it. So, we did hold a neighborhood meeting, a lot of the same conversations we had were what we kind of had here. We kind of went over the initial idea of, we had a couple residents that weren't at the initial approval, so we went through the original PDP and kind of what it was intended for and the pieces of it. And then we started talking about what changes to the overall site would happen, and essentially, we told them none. No changes to the existing trees. The traffic, we believe, is the exact same traffic that we've already talked about at that original PDP. The height of the dome, the color of the dome, we offered to change the color to whatever anybody wanted. White was kind of the preferred choice by staff and us, but if there were some other options of colors, we're fine with that. We've agreed that there'll be no signage on the dome, there'll be no, nothing that'll draw to it. We talked about the noise, the residential, the look of the dome, and we said, the dome is going to essentially look just like you'd think, it's a white dome out there on that backside of it, but in our opinion, because of where it's located, it's very limited on its impact to any of the neighboring properties. And then we talked about what happened to the dome deflated, so we kind of had a conversation on that side. So with that, again, we're here for any questions you might have. Okay, so we'll get to it. So Tom is there, if Tom, he doesn't need anything right now, but if you have questions dome-related, let's ping Tom and we'll get him on that.
All right, thank you. All right, we have Ms. Bright.
Okay, so before I begin, I did just want to note that staff will just be doing one singular presentation for both the special use permit and the preliminary development plan, since they're so intertwined, but they do still require two separate votes as they are still two separate applications. Adair Bright, Senior Planner, for PL 2025-241, the special use permit, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Exhibit A, 1 through 14 noted and entered into the record.
And for PL 2025-249, the preliminary development plan, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14 as well.
A, 1 through 14 noted and entered into the record.
Okay. So, earlier this year, the rezoning and the PDP for View High Sports Complex at 3301 Northwest Ashurst Drive was approved. This image here will just kind of show you that approved site plan with the aerial, just so you can get some context. The Summit Church is just to the north, we have Edgewood Trail to the east, and then we have that residential to the south, and Kansas City Limits to the west. The PDP included the complex, its associated parking, and then the north-south road also, which will connect Chipman to Ashurst. The original PDP that was proposed did note that the outdoor soccer fields and pickleball courts would remain uncovered, and then the applicant's representative came to us a couple of months ago and expressed the desire to cover the structures with the inflatable dome. Since the complex and the parking was previously approved, the focus this evening is just the PDP and the SUP for the inflatable seasonal dome, which would cover the outdoor soccer field, shown here in the yellow hatching, just from October 31st to March 1st on an annual basis. The PDP is triggered because of the increased height and the increased lot coverage, and those are considered a substantial change per UDO. And then the SUP is necessitated because the UDO states that the, that uses and accessory structures not identified as allowed, prohibited, or allowed with conditions shall require special use permit approval. The applicant is requesting that the SUP be approved for 20 years. However, since this is a new structure that staff is unfamiliar with, we would recommend a five-year initial approval period, which we have talked about with the applicant. They do understand staff's perspective, but still are requesting that 20-year approval The subject property is Zone CP2, which is our planned community commercial. The zoning does allow for the recreation facility with one condition as outlined in the UDO, and that condition mitigates the impacts of non-residential uses in residential areas by requiring the front entrance be at least 300 feet from any residential district or use, and that condition is being met by the development. Properties, sorry, properties both to the north and south are zoned Ag and include the Summit Church to the north and a single-family residence to the south. Property to the east is R1, and then property to the west is Kansas City Limits, and it's R80, it's one of their residential districts. The future land use map designates the subject property as commercial, and the comprehensive plan does specifically identify a commercial recreation facility as a use under the commercial land use category. The proposed development supports the quality-of-life focus area by offering programming centered around health and wellness. The inflatable dome would cover the area shown with the yellow hatching, which is approximately 53,500 square feet, and it would be installed and used from October 31st to March, as previously mentioned. Due to the proposed addition of the dome, the applicant would also be extending the fire lane along the southern portion here to provide access. And the dome itself is proposed to be a white vinyl double-walled fabric and would be 80 feet tall at its apex. When it comes to measuring building height, the UDO does identify three different ways, which you can see here, A, B, and C, they're all relative to the type of roof structure. So it doesn't unfortunately cover structures such as domes, which don't have a clear differentiation between the wall and the roof. Because of that, we did some research of the other cities that do have inflatable domes and how their height is measured. The code language here is from Overland Park stating that the building height is simply the vertical distance from the average ground level to the highest point of the building, with the exception being residential structures. The image in the bottom corner is from the Monolithic Dome Institute and shows the dome height being the measurement at its apex. Other inflatable domes within the Kansas City area are seen over tennis or volleyball courts, and since the sport court itself is smaller, the dome is not required to be as tall as is being proposed here. Due to the dome height being proposed at 80 feet tall, the applicant is requesting a modification through the PDP, which would be to double that height allowed within the CP2 zoning district. Staff is not supportive of the request due to the proximity to the residential and the overall lack of screening that can be done to mitigate the visual impact of the dome. We would be open to other structure types potentially to cover the field, but since the height of the dome itself is based on the size of the field, the dome does have to be 80 feet tall, as the applicant has explained to me in detail. The neighborhood meeting was held on October 14th, and the applicant did report that some of the questions and topics of concern were about the height and the color of the dome, any noise related to the equipment from the dome, the proximity to residential, and just the general storage of the dome. If recommended for approval, staff would recommend that the conditions on the screen be associated with each application, and I am here for any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. Do we have any comments about this application? You can come forward and state your name and address for the record. Did you swear in?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, come on up.
My name is Lawrence Close, address 509 Northwest Trail, Northwest Edgewood Trail, excuse me, Lee Summit, Missouri, the neighborhood adjacent to the soccer complex. So I think it's notable, number one, that while this project has been approved, then this amendment comes, which is pretty extraordinary, after the fact. The dome will be visible to probably about half of that neighborhood. When you think of 80 feet high, I'm not sure how many other structures in Lee Summit are 80 feet high. But particularly in the graphic show, the dome is basically level with the surrounding, level with the surrounding ground, which I think is what they present. The gentleman mentioned it would kind of be in a valley, and again, as the graphics show, that's not the case. So we agree with the, with your staff's report that would have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. I think they say likely, I would say no doubt it will have an adverse impact. The, this struck me during the presentation, again, the other domes, I think, that were shown there, again, were smaller facilities, like tennis courts, pickleball courts, staff mentioned volleyball courts. This is something that is bigger than a soccer field, it's because it's got to go over that and leave room on the inside. So I would just ask that the council disapprove this. Imagine that you had this huge blimp-like structure in your line of sight. When this is up, the leaves are gone, all the trees that are shown there. So, anyway, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any more public comments? All right, come up to the mic and state your name and address.
Yes, CL Beach at 520 Northwest Edgewood Trail, and my property is adjacent to the, actually, the corner of the property that's being built on. I guess one kind of, just a reminder question, the soccer field, of course, as everybody recognizes, is bigger than a football field. Okay, so I think a lot of people don't realize, regulation soccer field is quite large. So again, the dome, Larry's saying, the 80 feet, well, I think will be visible from a lot of, a lot of perspective around the neighborhood. And also the sound, they did a nice job with their estimates on the 60 decibels, but it would be nice to have a physical demonstration of that perhaps versus a calculated demonstration of the decibels that will be present from this. Again, also, I think it reminds us, what size is the footage of the dome length and width? I mean, they didn't remind us of that, I'd just like to know myself what's the size of it, again, knowing the size of the soccer field, the boundaries on each side will have to be, again, taller for allowing to play soccer. And I think that's, and is there any, will there be any limitation to the time it can be up? Perhaps they decided this is nice to have up until, you know, October 1 to March 1, but gee, we'd like it up till April or May, because that would be a limitation on something of that nature. That would be at least some assurance that it wouldn't be a year-round deal, because like I said, an 8-foot dome, like I said, I don't know if any other eight-story buildings in Lee Summit that I've ever seen, and I've been here 40 years, so maybe there are and I've missed them. No other comments at that time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, before we go to the commission with questions, so we're going to treat, I think we treat the PDP first, because if, if we don't recommend this change for approval, then the SUP is a moot point. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and would we still vote on the SUP?
They're both pretty intertwined, so if one doesn't get approved, then the other one's pretty much moot.
Okay.
So my thought is, you're considering two applications, two separate applications, you do need to make a recommendation of some sort on both applications.
Okay.
So if, for example, regardless of what your recommendation is on the first application, you still need to recommend something on the second application, after the second hearing.
And so I think as we ask questions, let's ask the applicant, let's ask it on the PDP first and get that part done, and then done, and then we'll move on to the SUP. So I will open it up to the commission for any questions. Did I hear you, Commissioner? Oh, you have one?
Yes, I do. Question for the applicant. My question is, do you have any protocols that will govern when exactly when there's a window of opportunity to put up and take down, so it doesn't kind of go into another month or so, and it just gets forgotten sometimes?
You mean when it would come down?
Yes.
Yeah, so there is, you know, so I can ask Shannon on that side of it, but I mean, I think that the window is set. I mean, it cannot become up before
Before a certain day.
October 31st or November 1st, and it is down by March 1st. So it is up to the owners to identify when to take it down to make sure that there isn't some extension on that side of it. So I believe that this approval would limit it specifically to those dates.
Based on the approval conditions that we do have, it does limit that timeframe from October 31st to March 1st. To remain in compliance with their special use permit, they would have to have it down by that time.
Okay.
So those conditions are there if you guys choose to recommend approval of this, to add that one on there.
Okay, and the additional question is, there is no plan to put more foliage, more trees, more evergreens up surrounding the space? That's not in the plan?
So we are open to that discussion, so we had this discussion multiple times with staff. So we agree with the neighbors. It's high, it's big, it's a tall dome that sits there. If screening around the front side of the building of it is something that you guys would like to see, we are more than open to that discussion. Our opinion was, when we looked at it, from a landscaping perspective, we have a lot of landscaping around the site now. If there's additional landscaping that's wanted around the sides of it, we are happy to do it, it was just the more the discussion of, due to its height, there isn't really a way to create anything that would truly screen it completely, right? And so if the planning commission would like to add that as an additional screening, we would be happy to do it and happy to have discussions on evergreens or whatever, because we had had that discussion, you know, on the exterior side of it, do they really do anything? Developers are open to that discussion if you'd like to have it.
Yeah, because I seen how you presented that at one side of it, they had some foliage and trees that were in the sightline, you could barely see a little bit of the top as well as the other side.
Yeah.
But one of the roads that you referenced, or someone referenced that, you could see the whole thing going down another road.
So on Ashurst Drive, my only point to it is, Ashurst Drive, which is the drive directly on the north side of that dome, I don't think there's enough screening you could put into it to visibly stop it. If there's additional screening you would like, you know, so we've already put trees and shrubs along the street frontage, happy to add more to it. We are not trying to go around the idea of the fact that it is tall, and you're going to see it from some version of it. Our opinion of that height and what you're seeing is that while you are in Edgewood, the highest point of Edgewood is on the west side. The subdivision itself goes downhill into Cedar Creek. So where the two residents that you've seen today have talked to you are generally located here and here, I don't believe that they are going to see that dome from their house. They're going to see the dome when they drive on Ashurst, they're going to see the dome potentially when they come off of, you know, anywhere in here or on that piece of it. But from their house, the additional house of, this is the one house on the west side, there's another one on the other side, I don't think you're visibly going to see much. If anything, you're going to see the top of that white dome.
Mm-hmm.
And again, we talked about it at the neighborhood meeting, if a white is not the color choice, another color choice is fine as well, but white seems to be the consistent color that everyone's using on these temporary facilities. And again, more to the idea, this dome, our benefit and belief is, is that they're going to be playing soccer out there, and so this is taking away the 60-foot overhead lights that are shining on that field every day until 10 o'clock at night, that's putting that inside. And so I think you're reducing the light issue that we had in the last one with the dome, and we understand the situation, that's where we're at. But yes, any more landscaping, we're happy to have a discussion, or any condition you want to put on it, we are open to that discussion.
Can I add on to your question?
I just wanted to add on to your question, Commissioner. I understand, like, putting evergreens against the dome is not going to help, but I think the neighbor's comment was related to their sightline in the winter, which is what we're talking about here, when the leaves aren't going to be on those trees. And I know there's a lot of trees in that area, I don't know what all they are, so I don't know if there's a way to get, you know, like, I'm thinking where the neighbors are, like, if you have 40-foot evergreen trees, you're probably not going to see that dome next to their property or near their property. I'm not talking about next to the dome. So I guess that's my question, because I thought there weren't evergreens or sequoias.
I don't think there's much of an evergreen. I think it's a typical hedgerow within just a mixture of trees on the interior side of it, and I do not believe that in any of our neighborhood meetings, we've had a resident that is adjacent to it.
Oh, I thought the one gentleman was
I believe, based on their addresses they provided, one of them lives here and one of them lives in that area, I believe is generally where they're located, so they're down to the east side. So I don't believe we've had anyone here, but we are open to that discussion of, we've had that same thought, and Shannon had brought that up before.
There's a lot of trees in that area?
Yep. I just, from an
During the winter, do they drop all their leaves, I'm guessing?
A number of them will, yeah, and so that's
And I don't know if there's even the capability, because there's so many trees there already, and you're not cutting those trees down, which I appreciate.
Right, you can see the dense tree back
Wandering on the edge of it. That detention, are there going to be trees in that detention area?
Well, again, back to the view, that detention basin's sitting way down in here, and so as I talk through the valley and the area of it, if you're sitting on View High, this entire site is sitting on a downhill slope, so it is in a deep valley. As it comes down, the detention basin will sit here, and then it goes back up to Edgewood where it sits, and then Edgewood goes back down as it falls to Creek, Cedar Creek. So, yes, we're fine with that. Our only issue was, these neighbors, probably in their backyards, is where that tree would go, and they haven't shown it to a meeting yet to have that conversation. If we need to reach out, we certainly can, but we're open to adding evergreens or whatever you'd like on the east side.
I mean, I think it's worth consideration, just for the sightline, but, you know, I know it's going to take a couple of years to get 40-foot evergreens there, so, or, what do you call it, sequoias or something?
Well, they have some arborists that can grow like three to five, like, they have green arborists that can grow three to five feet per year, but you've got to put them in as they matured, in my opinion. But it does cause concern, seeing that you want to put it up right when the leaves are falling down, and so they're going to see everything unless we did something like that. So that's just my concern.
Yeah, and we would be fine in putting a condition of a fast-growing, large-type evergreen on that condition or whatever.
You have other questions?
That's it.
I don't know if it's a question or a comment, I would have, we had to comment, but if I'm looking, the slide you had beforehand that had the brick building on the left-hand side of the screen, what direction was that, and what was that? Was that a home? Keep going.
Keep coming.
Maybe it was the other direction.
Other direction?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this is Edgewood, so this is the drive that is Ashurst now that continues on, so the dome is
Would be on
300 feet into that picture there.
Looking west.
Yeah, we're looking west, yeah, so we're standing essentially right here, looking west. So there is a good tree vegetation around that side of it, but again, they're all trees that are going to lose their leaves.
Okay, question about, I'm sorry, question about the lighting. So the lighting is inside, and I know there was quite a bit of discussion prior about the lighting and the lumens and that sort of thing. So am I to understand the dome will cover that, so part of the year, from October or November through March, you won't see, I mean, because it's the wintertime, so you won't, the lighting will be inside?
Correct, so the soccer field itself has a series of poles, and I don't think I've seen a final design on it, but say it's eight poles or six poles that are all 40, 50, 60 feet tall, like you'd have
Because they'll have to be less than 80.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be pushed down onto the field that would be operational until, I think it was 10:30 at night, per city codes. The dome itself will have its own lights that hang from within the structure itself. The exterior pole-mounted lights would not turn on when the dome was lit, and when the dome is lit, none of that lumens or the light leaves the dome itself, it all stays internal. So essentially, between the hours or months of November to March, we eliminate the noise, we eliminate the light that comes from the soccer field.
Were there any studies, I know you gave examples of other parts of the city where at least there were domes, I don't know if there were, and we started out with 60 decibels, right? And you mentioned that it reduces the sound impact, have there been any studies that speak to that? I mean, are we reducing it a little or a lot, or?
So that's what we tried to do in here, you know, and talk through that, you know, a soccer field, a soccer game, if you look at a chart, it'll tell you that it's about 90 decibels for the cheering and the screaming and the yelling. By the time you're 310 feet away, excluding the idea of the trees and the vegetation is there, the calculations would state that it would be down to about 40 decibels at the proper line. And so again, as we talk about the air handling unit, if it was sitting at 300 feet away, it would be at 30 decibels, but as we talked about in the neighborhood meeting, we'll try to place that in such a way that it'll be on this backside that the building will additionally block that noise. And so our opinion, the dome will reduce the noise that the neighbors will see or hear during the November to March.
I've been to a soccer game, that's crazy.
Loud.
I'll reserve the rest for my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Trafton?
Thank you, Chair. I do have several questions. The sightlines that you put on there were from the neighbors, I don't know where it was in the neighbor, oh, was it the street?
The pictures?
The street was the sightline in front of the house?
You're talking about the pictures we had, or the
Oh, yeah, no, you got it.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the street?
Yeah, so what we tried to pick is a car that would be sitting on View High, and then we tried to pick a car that would be sitting over in the subdivision. So you're in front of the westernmost house in the subdivision.
Like, how would that sightline change if it was that back porch of that house or the back patio of that house?
So the house itself, I mean, the elevation of the house and the elevation of that dome are essentially the same, so if you went to the idea that the trees are not there, I think you see the dome. Now, you have a number of trees and things that'll be in the way, that'll be the trunk and the limbs and the pieces that'll still be there with a mixture of evergreens that are existing, so it'll be broken, but it's still going to be visible. In perspective to that neighbor, though, today, what he's staring at is the backside of a 46-foot-tall building without this project here. So all through the year, he's not looking at the dome, but he is looking at the backside of that sports facility that exists that's 46 feet tall. Not to suggest that they're the same, but just to suggest that the idea is that that building wall plane is going to be something that they're seeing out their back window.
Yeah, what color is that wall?
That is white as well, so the building itself, if you recall, if I have
It's not natural.
Yeah, it's that mixture of metal panels on that backside.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, I think you answered that question, thank you. You talk about the color of the dome, I mean, I know I've seen, I see these domes all over town, and they are all white, I mean, that would not be my preferred color if I was putting a dome in in a neighborhood that was a soccer field. I mean, I don't, I mean, does the color change the price of the dome or anything? Because
Well, that's Tom's, for sure, but I don't believe it does. I think that there's color options out there, I think that as we've kind of asked that question to staff and asked that question to the neighbors, I don't think anybody has had a strong opinion.
Is the reason why you would choose white is because it's just common or something? Because to me, like, an evergreen color, it would kind of disappear, right? A little bit, not against a white building, but if you're looking through trees and you see a green, the dome will kind of disappear, because that's what you're going to see in the summer, is green leaves and all that. So, I mean, I'm just curious why the preferred color's not evergreen or something.
That I don't know, but maybe I can phone a friend, Tom, if he's there, however I get him on there and see what
Who sells these domes and how many does
Yeah, Tom
But I've never, I didn't know color was an option, so
So maybe Tom can answer, if we can get him on.
Yeah, this, right, this is Tom Sengen with Horizon Building Systems.
Has he been sworn in?
Tom, if you could, we need to get you sworn in so you can testify.
That would be just fine.
And if you could turn your camera on, that'd be great as well.
Okay. All right.
Are we supposed to say I'm on the screen?
Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, Tom. So you sell these domes, right?
We manufacture them, yes.
And so how many, are they all always white, or have you done colors?
No, we have done colors. White is by far the most popular, and part of that is just the efficiency of them, because a white dome will have a little gain, right? But in the wintertime, that's not as much of a concern. So the second most popular color is a gray, it's like a light gray color, and a lot of domes are gray, mostly permanent ones, but some seasonal ones as well, yes.
Okay, can you also answer the question related to the length and the width of the dome base?
Yes.
Do you have dimensions? Okay.
I don't remember the dimensions specifically of this dome, however, in terms of the height is the point of the question, is that right?
No, I think the neighbor was asking about the length and the width on the base of it, you know, like a soccer field, I don't know the dimensions of a soccer field, but
The footprint.
Yeah, so Tom, if you want, I think that right now, the soccer field is 250 by 330, I think, is what we're thinking.
230.
Yeah, somewhere in that range is essentially where it's going to be, it's 230, 240, 330 range on the length of it. So it's still a little flexible in the width, but the dome would cover that entire area.
Goes out, I'm guessing, wider than the width of the
So the
X feet?
Not much, so the idea is, is that the use of a field of that size can get transferred, like, divided into three fields for little youth or 7V7, and so they'll shrink in the field most of the time. So the desire is to cover the entire field, so you have a regulated field that would only have a few feet on the outside of it, but then the guys would utilize it for practices or games by maybe cutting the field in half or maneuvering around for practices by cutting it into certain pieces. So it would not be much larger than that width of that soccer field.
But it would be larger, but you're saying only
A few, yeah, a few feet is what we're trying to kind of figure that
Versus 10.
Right.
I was thinking people needed to sit on the outside of the field, they can't sit on the field.
Yeah, so the idea would be is that if it was most games, they would shrink the field slightly
Right, you'd split it in half
But I mean, even if you did a full-size field, you may shrink it down slightly from what it could be versus outdoor season.
Okay, great.
Chair, I got one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
The manufacturer on the screen, is that if it was gray, would it be fade-resistant, UV-protecting? Because over time, sometimes if you have colored domes, they could fade and then become discolored and maybe eyesore, and we didn't plan on that now, so that's my question.
Yeah, so the gray is mixed throughout the entire thickness of the material, and it is UV-protected, and the vinyl just doesn't fade like you would see on things that are not UV-protected materials. You're correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I think you answered my questions, Tom. My other questions are related to Mr. Sledge, I just wanted to see, like, if you know the height of those trees down there by the homes, are they 40 feet?
That would be a guess at this point, but I would say That would be a guess at this point, but I would say you're safe to say. Tom, I gotta figure out how to get Tom off of my screen. There we go. You know, in relation to like the house, I think you certainly have some mature cheeries that are thirty-plus feet tall, but we have not honestly measured each of those to tell you. But they're tall enough that their roof lines of the houses.
Oh, I was just testing to see, because I know they have these handy dandy, you know, digital measurers now, you know? I didn't know if you guys use those, but they're pretty handy.
They certainly would be.
Okay, so the trees on View High, I'm, I know this is kind of unrelated, but I did want to go back to it. Because I do drive by the site almost regularly. It's my main thoroughfare. So that's, those are, those trees are pretty wide. And the way you guys have it on the PDP, like the parking lot comes right up to those trees. Like, you're really not going to cut any of those trees down?
The intent is not, so if you see, the property line is way over here on the westerly side. So the parking lot is actually set back twenty feet. So you can start to see those trees on that visual. And so there's some back in here that I think will be in there. So we'll continue to work on that as the final construction plans come together. But the intent is that the sidewalk and the trail is to maintain those existing trees in there. But you're right, there are some large oaks in there that are.
I mean, I would hope that you can, but I just question that when I see the PDP and it looks like you're gonna, there's not, it doesn't seem like it computes.
Right.
So I don't know.
Yeah, and we'll continue to work through that into the design.
Okay, thank you. Let me see. I think you answered all my questions. My other questions for Adair.
Do you guys want to see a sample of that panel at all?
Sure.
Does she have?
He got it here.
I know Randy does. Commissioner Benbrook. Adair, do we have any domes in Lee Summit like this?
No.
Like, not this size, I'm guessing. Because this is probably the biggest in the region, so.
It's the biggest that I found, yes.
Okay, yeah, that was my big question for you.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Frazier?
So I saw that there was proposed landscaping or trees between the property lines of the residence and the retention pond. But nothing proposed, and this is a question, between the, is it retention or?
Deed.
Detention and the soccer field. Am I correct in that? Because either there's three up here and.
Yeah, so what we were trying to do in here is this existing vegetation, and the color's a little tricky to see. That's our anticipation of what we will maintain on existing vegetation. We've put some trees in to try to fill in that gap that was created. From the soccer field down to the detention facility will be a three to one slope.
Because it is, okay.
It'll be a pretty decent slope. And there'll be a retaining wall on the backside of that soccer field. So there wasn't really a way to put any trees on that side. But our thought was is that the tree mass that was on kind of the far easterly side would always take care of that side of it. Because additionally, the other idea is on this side of the soccer field, there will be a, a net or something on that side to stop the ball from going down in the hole.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, I did forget to ask Ms. Bright one other question. So when we look at eighty feet, that converts to six point eight to eight stories tall. What's the tallest building in Lee Summit?
Oh, gosh, I can't think of the tallest.
It's St. Luke's East, isn't it?
Correct, it'd be St. Luke's.
And how tall is St. Luke's East?
I believe we're six to seven stories now.
So as, as a comparison point?
The best comparison point that we kind of came up with was the new Christmas tree outside. It's forty feet tall.
Oh, yeah, I see it lit now.
So it'd be double that. And we figured that was kind of something that everybody has seen, but aside from.
It'd be double that?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, also, I wanted to ask staff, this is building off of Terry. How tall are our water towers in Lee Summit?
The water towers are going to vary based on engineering needs. So I can get back to you on a range. I don't have that off the top of my head right now.
Because I was thinking if, in the eighty-foot range, if we're going to be in the water tower height or if they're more like closer to a hundred, but if they're closer to a hundred, you can see it's going to be a little less than that.
Yeah, another good example could potentially, cell phone towers, they're going to range from the seventy to a hundred and twenty feet. So some are, you know, right in there.
I doubt that fire hasn't. All right, thank you.
I have a question. Does anybody know what the tallest dome structure is in our metro area?
So staff can certainly say they've done their research too. We've tried to look up there. I don't know. There isn't really, there's a mixture of them that go over tennis courts. There's a mixture of them that go over pickleball courts. Our assumption on those heights are in the thirty, forty-foot type range just based on the idea of the dome height is based on the length and it's one-third your longest leg. And so that's how we get to our eighty-foot portion of that side of it. You know, and so I think there are some pieces in the discussion of if we stand beside the tree and think of it being double high, it's eighty feet. But to where these neighbors would be would be a block over. So, you know, so the height is still there, but the distance, I think, from a longitudinally away from them or a distance away from them, it also helps to think of it. So, you know, very few people are going to stand beside this structure. And then again, the structure is a dome. So there is an eighty-foot at the peak, but principally it's zero on the edges. You know, so there is a portion of that dome that isn't, majority of that dome isn't eighty feet. It's some percentage less of it. But that's where we had the same conversation on height. There isn't a way in the code to measure any differently because code says the highest point. But, you know, essentially we start at zeros and go up. And so it's, it's a tricky one to have, so we understand.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, just to follow up on the, the water tower height. Everyone knows the historic Longview Water Tower. That one is right at a hundred feet.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Grono?
You want to come back? I, I was going to try to say just stay, but.
It's all right, I need steps.
All right. Did you guys explore any other type of structures for the dome? I'm not a dome expert. I don't know a whole lot about domes. Are there other solutions? Did you guys explore those things? Why, why did we pick this design?
Yeah, so, so the idea was there's really two ways to do this. Do a dome, do a building. In our opinion, having a building that again is, you know, that rectangle, forty-plus feet in height, it isn't as attractive to the idea that this one is outdoor soccer field a majority of the year. During those winter months, our opinion was that the trade-off of losing the light, the noise, it was a gain. While we understand that dome, the thought is, is that the building is the only real other option of it. So there isn't the dome supplier, it's not Tom's fault. The domes have to get created because structurally, you have to have the peak in order to create the pressure to have that rigid dome structure on that side of it. So, so we did look at the options of a building and a dome. And the dome became the better option in our opinion because it remains to have an outdoor soccer field, which they desire. And then it also provides the opportunity to reduce some of the noise and lights during the winter months when we think it'd be most impactful to the neighbors of having the longest terms of those fields being lit.
Will you walk through, what's the maintenance component of the, of the dome? So what's that schedule? What's that process?
Yeah, let me phone a friend, Tom, again, if he can come in, he can go through it all.
Yep, no problem. Okay, so maintenance, since this is going to be up only a portion of the year, the maintenance on the dome is going to be very little. The dome, of course, is made of fabric. Only if there are like, any damage or, or scrapes or scratches or cuts that occur while the building is being put away or, or installed, those are easily repairable. The maintenance on the, the lights is almost none, right? The LED lights, everyone knows LEDs now are much more reliable than the old style light fixtures. The HVAC equipment, the pressurization and heating equipment, that's going to be the, the number one area for maintenance. Again, with a seasonal building, you've got ample opportunity while the building is packed away to do maintenance on the HVAC equipment. So generally, it's a once-a-year type thing. Come out, check out the system in the fall while, while you're inflating. Make sure the heat's running, make sure the fans are running properly. So it's, it's pretty minimal in terms of overall maintenance.
All right, Commissioner Tuzinski?
Hey, Mr. Sledge, yeah, a quick question. So does, is there a ability to have this be cooled also in addition to heat?
Turn that back to Tom, let him know, I don't know.
Tom?
Yeah, it definitely can be cooled. Many buildings are, of course. Most of the permanent buildings in the southern half of the country are cooled. And, but those are, like I said, permanent, completely different than the plan for this one.
And, and that's where I guess, you know, I don't know if this is, should be safer when we have our opinions or now, but that's where my concern is, is, is what happens now? They come in, they, they get a permission, they, they put it up for a couple of years. Then they realize, well, heck, we have to spend so much money to take it down. Why don't we just leave it up year-round? So they come back for a different extension to the, to the permit, you know, the use permit. But then also, then I think with a permanent building, you wouldn't have the noise. You wouldn't have the light. You'd probably have that second building would then block the noise for the pickleball courts. They could use it like year-round, they could use it well beyond the ten o'clock in the summers. They could have games to start at midnight. And then for me, it's, it's the height. That, that's my concern. I mean, if it's twenty feet less than the water tower and Longview and, and that, just it's going to be seen and especially in the wintertime. So I really, you answered a lot of my questions already, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. For the applicant, you showed a, a image of an air handling unit that would be used to pressurize this building. Was that air handling unit or somebody did?
I did, yeah.
Okay. Was that air handling unit sized appropriately for this building or is it for a much smaller building?
You got to hit me. It was not specific to this building. It is their air handling unit they provided to us from a picture of what they would do for that facility. So they, it is for a facility of similar size. It's not like it's for a smaller unit. But it is an air handling unit that'd be utilized in the facility.
And you promised the neighbors that it would be located on the, the west side of the building?
Right, we told. We told the idea was we would move it away from them as much as possible, whether that be the southwest, the west, or somewhere where it made sense because obviously it still has to get into the building facility and do its job. But we said certainly we weren't going to look to put it on the east. We weren't going to look to put it anywhere to create more noise. We'd put it away to try to reduce.
So by putting that on the west side, we're looking at shifting the soccer field, correct?
I don't know what we're doing yet on that because we still have, because the idea. So can I get back, Shannon, to my site plan?
Because that air handling unit looked fairly substantial. I would, I would say you're going to need an additional twenty feet on that side of the building just by what I visualized in that image.
Yeah, so I think it's a thirty by thirty pad is what we believe it will sit.
Okay.
And so as we start to look through the site use of where that wants to sit, we have room in here where I think we can shift the drive over closer because we've converted this pickleball into a retaining wall as part of our design side of it. So some of that area that we had in separation is getting not meted. So I think that we can shift, our initial thought is this road would shift slightly as it gets to the end to create a spot somewhere down in here that should prevent it from having to move that soccer field or move anything else. Because the problem too of moving the soccer field east is that's going downhill. And so the wall's getting bigger and it just, it creates more and more problems.
That was going to be my follow-up question, depending on how you answered. Thank you. To continue with, you did a great job trying to deflect the question about why not just build a permanent building. You said this, you thought the dome would look nicer. I, I don't fully buy that answer, but that's okay. I understand there are probably some financial reasons, right? But I do, when I look at this and I, and I just mentally do some gymnastics, my unqualified brain to do math, I, I can't see that there's a whole lot of building savings over a ten-year process, let's say, or even a twenty-year, like they're requesting for the SUP. I can't see there with, with the setup and the maintenance and the takedown. So you already have one indoor soccer. I understand you want to do an outdoor soccer. I also understand that you, you kind of qualified that as saying that you, in the Kansas City area, we have three hundred and forty days, I believe, of weather above temperatures in which they would consider using the field anyway, whether it was a dome or not. So twenty-something, let's just say thirty days a year of usage, it seems to be a big expense. So I guess the question is, why not do a permanent building? Why not just scrap this thing altogether? It, it doesn't make sense to me, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
Right. So, so I think the idea of the permanent building is what do you do with a separated facility? And it wouldn't be able to be located as building an independent sixty thousand square foot building on that side of it. Because now you'd want to then probably connect it to the main building. So now we're starting to talk about modifying and connecting something in that end, which maybe that ends up being the result of it. Like I said, the, the comment was made that we approved the original plan and then came back through to approve this as kind of a secondary thing. This wasn't thought of. You know, this wasn't a plan, this wasn't an idea. This came from the fact that the soccer clubs that are out there are saying, it's awesome. You're one of the only ones that have this big of an indoor soccer field. We also want that one. And so then it started trying to figure out ways to do it. And so they'll use the outdoor field with those days, but the problem starts to become the, the rain days or the snow days or the pieces of it. The climate control piece during that few months helps to just create an opportunity for those clubs to have consistency, to have a tournament, to have other opportunities. So, you know, if, if the building is the option, then we'll go back and look at that and see what that is. The idea, I think, was is that having both options on site of an indoor and outdoor field is beneficial from a business standpoint because you have an opportunity that you have guys that don't want to play indoor soccer and they want to play outdoor soccer. And so it, it gives flexibility to the facility. So it's, it's understood. I just, I think that that was their desire and their reason is that they want to have the opportunity to keep an outdoor field here for the purposes of the business. And the building growing to encompass another one didn't seem to make sense on that side of it. So this became an option that they wanted to pursue.
Okay. One final question. I think you addressed this already, but I just wanted clarity. The eighty-foot height is the minimal height you can do to make the structure rigid and perform appropriately? Is that correct? Or can we reduce the height and still get the rigidity and the engineering in this building?
Tom, do you want to explain the height requirement or how we get there? Or what you could potentially do?
Yes, definitely. So the, the height of the building is based upon the snow load and wind load calculations for the area. Okay, so the, the comment was one-third of the width of the building is the height that we designed to. There is some, some ability to make changes to that. There's an ability to make that a little shorter. It may affect the structural design of the building somewhat in terms of requiring a slightly higher air pressure inside the building to make the building rigid enough to withstand the wind load and the snow load. The wind load actually decreases as the building gets shorter, but the snow load increases dramatically because it's a more flat surface, if you will, flatter on the top. So that's why the taller the building where you've got a snow load is better for the design. But it can be overcome by making the building somewhat shorter. A typical range on that would be down at, it doesn't sound like much, but thirty percent of the width as opposed to one-third of the width. So that could drop it about six feet or so on a building of this size.
Does that change, I guess, does that change the, the cost of the building at all? I mean, because you're talking about possibly reducing it six, seven feet. I'm assuming that you'd get some material savings, but you, you know, a little bit more in the investment of the engineering. So I, my, again, my unqualified math brain says it would be an even break as far as building cost?
It's probably pretty close to even, yes. It might increase the foundation size a little bit simply because when it's a lower height, it changes the pitch or the angle that the dome is being attached to the foundation, which puts a slightly higher horizontal load on that footer or the foundation. So it may need to be slightly deeper, but that can all get worked out in engineering.
Okay. So just to follow up, you mentioned foundations. Is. Okay. So, just to follow up, you mentioned foundations. Is this going to have basically a grade beam foundation perimeter? Is it going to be, I don't know, blocks recessed in the ground? What do the foundations look like on this thing?
Yeah, typically they are concrete foundation perimeter flush with grade, all below grade.
Continuous, or are they broken?
Continuous. So, when you take the dome down for the summertime, essentially it, you know, everything goes away except for that top. You see the top perimeter of the foundation, but that's it.
So, going back to the applicant, you now have a ring of concrete around a soccer field. What's the safety for that like? I mean, you're telling me you're going, you have a few feet between the inbound or the line and where this massive foundation's going to be. I'm assuming there are going to be eyelets or something to tie down to?
Right.
What's the safety look like on that?
Right. So we're going to cover, so it's essentially it can be below grade of the turf. So it's an artificial turf out on that side of it, and essentially it's the cap removal of the turf that can get put back down during, that's why we're doing it outside, right, of the playing field, but just a couple of feet. But essentially we're going to have a turf cap that you can put over top of the foundation to cover that portion of that footing, you know, so you're not playing on it. You potentially do have someone who could come out and step on it, but the idea is that the turf is going to be situated at the cap that'll see, firmly situated.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And then, I guess, to the comment and conversation of Tom's point, we had those conversations with him of dropping it. I just didn't, I don't know that if it's 80 or 74, that that's really a big difference. If that is a conversation that you guys would want us to explore more, like with staff and I were talking about it, it was more like, we wanted a big reduction, you know. So that's why I say, so we did have those conversations on that side of it. The developers opened to that discussion. I just didn't figure we were probably in a few-feet type discussion, it's more of a major discussion.
Thank you, Chair.
Matt, one quick question also. It's a natural turf field. It's not, have they even considered it an artificial field?
No, no, it's artificial turf.
The hole is artificial turf?
Yeah.
So even when it's raining and stuff, they can still play on it?
Yeah.
And it drains and all that?
Yeah, like I said, the field itself will serve and function majority of the year. I mean, like I say, that's from a benefit to these guys is, that's why that field's going to be operational a number, a majority of the days, you know. So certainly, the dome assists in it, but the dome basically just provides that for sure, no weather's going to come in and close out a tournament, which is the biggest problem in doing an outdoor weekend type deal. So that second field provides that opportunity.
Thank you.
Chair, I do have a follow-up for Mr. Schlitz. Did you guys, you mentioned a retaining wall for where the pickleball courts are going to where the soccer field's going to sit? Because I mean, there's an elevation change significantly. I mean, did you guys talk or look at sinking the field, like taking where the pitch is on the low side and just, I mean, that would lower the impact of the height of that? So you guys looked at that?
Yeah, so we did look at all those ideas. The issue with it is that there's not really a way to do a significant reduction in elevation that creates anything that wouldn't make the dome be still big, you know, high. And so it's the idea, we looked at, what could we take from the lowest elevation of the building down to the soccer field, and it's a few feet, you know. So it's a few feet, but again, if it's the conversation of a few feet there and the dome comes down a few feet, we drop it 10 feet, now 70 foot's what we're asking for. That's where staff, we've had many conversations of, when you have an arching dome, what's the height of it? Because it's 80 for sure in the middle, but it's not through the majority. So if you take an average, it's not a big deal. But that's just not how the code reads, because it's, you haven't had one yet.
I mean, it's still going to be 80 feet tall, but it'll be 10 feet below grade, so, or something like that. Like, I don't know what kind of impact that does, but I think Commissioner Arrington had, did you have something, Arrington, did you have something that you want to add?
No, I was just thinking, is there any examples, models that, of an 80-foot, what it looks like, actually looks like, that we could see a video, pictures of it that's already up?
There are certainly pictures. Let's see. So there you go, 300 by 240 is what originally said. So here's their architectural flyer of what you're seeing. So, let's see if we can find a dome. I mean, that's, that's a dome.
That's it?
I mean, that's, that's the dome size 255 by 395. So that's larger, that's 100,000 square foot, so that's larger than the one lengthwise. The one we're proposing is 240 x 300, so it's
It's like a mini dome.
Larger. The, I mean, there's your inside.
I mean, I see, I found one of these in Springfield, Illinois. They have them up in Minnesota. I'm, you know, I don't know how close there is one to the, like, to see a real one, but you know, it kind of eclipses all the buildings around it.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why I say, so from a location standpoint, that's where we thought the opinion of putting it back in that, back in here where it was away from residential pieces, other than obviously the neighbors in the backyard, we've kind of positioned it where it is. But yeah, understand, I mean, it's a, it's a facility that will have some visual impact, and our hope is that from a temporary perspective, it isn't that impactful, but understand.
I don't know if the other commissioner mentioned it, but if we did have a permanent structure, what would the height of that structure be?
So the permanent structure that is adjacent to it, I believe is 46 feet tall. So the backside of our 42, I guess it is. So that is the back of our soccer field that sits inside right now. So 42 feet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question for staff. So, since this is the first of this kind that we're seeing, can you talk a little bit about what creates a precedent for us, since it's the first that we're seeing of a dome of this height, depending on how recommendations or conversations go?
So yeah, that's kind of where staff struggled with this one. This is the very first structure of this type in the city, very first structure of this type that's been proposed since I've been here, since Hector's been here. He's been here for quite a while. So staff really did struggle with, how do we approach this? So, we look to, you know, when we review projects and determine our recommendations, we look to guidance that we've previously received from the planning commission or from the city council. There is none here. So, the only real guidance we have on the height of this particular type of structure is just the standard UDO 40-foot max. So, the conservative approach was to go with that guidance. So that's why staff has struggled supporting that 80-foot modification. We're not opposed to the dome itself, we're not opposed to the use, it's just we struggle with, we don't have anything to review this again. So really, this is our, looking to planning commission and looking to the city council, what do you want us to do? And this is kind of why we've brought it before you in this manner and with these type of applications.
I was just curious, Shannon, if, like, did you guys reach out to these other communities that have these domes, like Springfield, Illinois? And, I mean, I did a Google search and found a handful of them.
Yeah, I didn't reach out to Springfield. I did reach out to Westwood, Kansas, and Mission Hills, which are both within the Kansas City area. Also looked into all the other ones within this application. A lot of them are either within the height requirements that they have in their codes, because they are only over tennis courts
Yeah, there's more.
Or volleyball courts, or some of them even predate their height maximums. So they didn't really have much guidance one way or the other.
Did you, you said you talked to Mission Hills?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm like, the homes around that tennis court, I mean, I've been by that one as well.
Yeah.
And I mean, they're million-dollar homes, so.
Yes, and those ones have been around for some time. I think my friend works there, and so I reached out to him, and he said they are 40 feet tall in that area, but that their maximum height allowed is 25 feet, but that those are, they've been predating their height maximum.
They got grandfathered in.
So.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have, it sounds like no more questions from the commission, so do we?
Give one more comment to that side of it, just food for thought?
Sure, sure.
So, food for thought on that side that we've talked to the developer, you know, just like Shannon and I have figured out, is if the height is the issue, is there a height that makes sense? You know, so obviously we'd reduce the amount and the size of the soccer field, but I guess, could I ask that the planning commission, if 80-foot is too tall, give us some kind of number, and then we can see if something fits into it? Because, again, the difficulty is, a permanent structure is certainly an option of putting up another building. It doesn't make sense with what they'd like to do, but if, and this is the first one, and that's kind of like I said, as we've talked about with staff, is there a number that makes sense, and we can figure out what the field could be, and maybe that doesn't even become a solution, but at least to have that discussion and dialogue to figure out if there's an option out there?
I think height is an issue, and the building you said is 46 feet.
Yeah.
So, does anybody have an opinion on that?
We can just address that in the comments, I think, we can.
Yeah, and as I say, just food for thought, just to give some discussion or direction for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm opening it up for comments, closing public hearing, so if somebody wants to talk about that.
This is the opinion phase? I can surely offer an opinion. I'm usually not short on those. Yes, the height is a problem with me. It'd be one thing if we were, you know, at a 40-foot by the UDO and you were asking for a 25% increase to push to 50, but we're asking for a 100% increase. That's a bit much, in my opinion. I would say if I'm asked an opinion on a max height, 50-foot would be something I'd be comfortable with, with the standard building, or, you know, to be honest, I don't mind the domes. The one in Martin City is real close to where I work, and I drive by it all the time, and it's below the tree line, so it's not as imposing. 80-foot to me seems a little imposing. But, so overall, like, the dome itself doesn't bother me. The height is definitely an issue for me.
All right. Chairman, thanks. You know, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Benbrook here, but I also want to state that when this development came in front of us, we knew it was a great development for the city. We knew it was an awesome opportunity, and we knew it was going to great serve the children and other people that use the fields. We also knew, it was also going to be, like a better word, a little detrimental to the people that live behind there, but we felt like, hey, it's people playing games, you know, it's going to be till 10:00 in the summer, then they're going to be able to have reasonable time to go to bed and that. Now you come back with another building that's much taller, and I think there comes a point of where, I wouldn't say you asked for too much, but it comes a point of where, hey, we need to start realizing, when does it start becoming detrimental? I understand why you want to do it, and I would support another building, I would support up to 50 feet. I think if you came back with another building, I think you'd even make the residents extremely happy with the noise and the lights and everything else. I mean, that would become less of an issue for them than around there. And just think to the parcel just on the south side of your building, that's going to eventually develop into something too. And so we're not even really talking about that. And so that's going to be there. But now granted, you'd be there first, and so people would be there and be making that decision to live there. But long-term for the community, I like what you're going to do, I like the function of this. I am not on board with the 80 feet, and I will definitely be voting no for that. But I would be interested to see you come back, come back with another building, or something else, maybe that fits within that height guidelines. Because, again, I don't know if I want this to be our first foray into this, and I don't want this to come up again and be like, hey, we did it over there, so let's do it over here and there. And I think I'd be much more happy to support the city and the city staff with a much lower height closer to our UDO. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
I don't have any new comments, so I'm good.
Commissioner Trafton?
Yeah, I have some, you know, we're on the cutting edge, and there's like, some good things about being on the cutting edge, would be the only one of those in the region, but it just seems a lot to take in as our first foray into this. I think, you know, it does make more sense. I don't know if, you said you were going to cut up potentially inside and have smaller fields inside, so maybe you do half of it, and then you get to half the height, which gets you to the 40 to the 50 size, which I think is in line with what you're building over there. I mean, I agree, like, I'm excited about this facility coming into the community. I think it's going to be great. It's going to, you know, be adjacent to the other soccer fields down the hill. But I also am, you know, like, does it need to be right now? It could also be later down the road, and we're looking at different opportunities, or, you know, I just feel like there needs to be a little more exploration into it, and, like, what are some opportunities to, you know, deal with the size of it? It's just pretty massive. When you look at images online of soccer complexes in other communities in Minnesota and Illinois, they kind of like, they're like mountains, like little mini mountains. So, with that, like, I'm, you know, on the fence, but leaning with my, leaning towards my partners on this.
I too am challenged with the height. And I recall when it originally came in front of us, we listened to the residents, and there were a number of concerns, not only with the noise, and I think I spoke to that earlier, but then also, again, with the lighting. As someone who can see out of my backyard, my deck, and a, the water tower that is 100 feet every single day, I don't know that, I think I would appreciate seeing an example, a better example of what this looks like, you know, 310 feet away from my property line. So, I am leaning toward, if there's something that you could do with the height, understanding if you do the height, that it's going, it sounds to me as if it's going to expand as well. I think it may curtail the noise, and that was a, that was a point of concern by the residents as well. So, at this point, I'm leaning no.
I concur with all the other commissioners and their comments. Yeah, I would look really, I look forward to seeing an example of what you can bring back to us, maybe a comparison that's in another spot, maybe another dome or another structure that makes more sense, but still supports the comprehensive plan that we're trying to get to. So that's what I have.
I guess I would say I concur with everyone else as well. I had a concern about the height when I was reading the packet, and then, just as we've talked about in the meeting, it hasn't really changed that concern. I would say, also, I feel like, I think it was Commissioner Tzuzinski said that coming back to the neighbors and talking about this, I mean, it's just a lot for them to take in, and I, just, the uncertainty about how that really looks, and to get some kind of coverage for that or any screening, you'd have to have some very, very large evergreen trees. So I am not in support of it at this height. And I'm going to look for a motion on this application.
Chair, if we could maybe get a five-minute recess to discuss with the applicant to see if there's something that they could maybe offer to either postpone it or maybe see what, how they want to handle this moving forward before we have that motion?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ever wondered how the city budget works? The total 2026 budget is over $380 million, which includes funding for daily operations, capital improvements, debt service, internal service, and enterprise operations. For example, the general fund is the foundation for the city's day-to-day services and investments like road maintenance, public safety, and fire protection. The general fund is supported by property taxes, sales taxes generated by local businesses, franchise taxes, and other sources like licenses, permits, and fees. For every dollar citizens pay in property tax, the city receives 18 cents. This means the city receives $845 a year in property taxes for a median single-family house. These taxes provide public safety, park maintenance, infrastructure, and the best services to keep lease summit going and improving. One of the community's top priorities is infrastructure investment, which is reflected in the capital improvement plan. $113 million of the 2026 budget is invested into the capital improvement plan. The 2026 capital improvement budget includes investments like the 291 and 50 highway interchange, Third Street, Warden-Purcell's intersection, and Prior Road. The budget process includes guidance from the city council, citizen input, and critical success factors from the city's Ignite strategic plan. To learn more about the city's budget, visit citiofls.net/budget. To learn more about the city's budget, visit cityofls.net/budget.
When the person called on the phone, she said that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. And they walk, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner, I'm the manager of Lee Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here, you know, has some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walk-in dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together and then we have what's called play groups, kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So, this actually has traps in it, but. We do a lot of wildlife trapping, I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really, you're surprised you can't have an alligator in your house? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals, and we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold, and then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have, you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them, you spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered and all their vaccinations up to par and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through, and then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go, and we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home. Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got to weird me out. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats, she'll kind of get her grumpy face going. And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home, you know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently I was gardening some attention, and so we went out there and had them talk about that. Do I do this job? Ah, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You know, you're just bringing animals in here, taking care of them, and finding them homes, and yeah, absolutely animal lover.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here. I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you, we see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard, we feel valued, we feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring, so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plain clothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me, I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them, when say, 982 ZENBROUGHT. Officers in route, 914, armed, drawn, and armed.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe, I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you, I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has. In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of crisis intervention team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, and getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them, and showed them you do, and you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
I'm going to ask Commissioner Grono to give a motion.
Chair, I move to recommend denial of application PL 2025-249 Preliminary Development Plan, View High Sports Complex Inflatable Soccer Dome 3301 Northwest Ashhurst Drive, Engineering Solutions LLC applicant.
Second. Okay, before we vote, remember if it's a denial and you are in favor of the denial, vote yes. If you're not in favor of the denial, vote no. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Ed Yerington?
Yes.
Sherri Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grono?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
He left. All right, so the motion, the recommendation for denial has been passed, and we will move on to our next hearing.
Chair, we need a motion on the second application.
Oh, okay, I guess I thought we weren't doing it since it got denied. Okay, so, can we get a motion on, well, let me read it, application PL 20, wait a minute, we're not going to do a hearing on it, are we, or anything separate?
Those were joint public hearings.
Okay, all right. Application, we need a, well, then I need a motion on this application, or on this, yes, the special use permit.
Chair, I recommend denial of application PL 2025-241 Special Use Permit, View High Sports Complex Inflatable Soccer Dome 3301 Northwest Ashhurst Drive, Engineering Solutions LLC applicant.
Can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Ed Yerington?
Yes.
Sherri Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grono?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we will move on to application PL 2025-207 Preliminary Development Plan, East Village, approximately 130 acres, generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of US 50 Highway and South M291 Highway, East Village Investors LLC applicant. For all those planning to give testimony or speak on behalf of this application, if you would stand up and be sworn in at this time?
Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Mr. Pennington?
Good evening, my name is Matt Pennington, president of Drake Development. Tonight, I just, I'm just going to open it up and just obviously introduce our team, but we have all of our team here tonight from Drake Development to answer any question you may have as we get further into material. I know we're going to unpack a lot, I know there's 125 acres to talk about, but it's a really exciting time for this group and for the city to being what we're going to be able to bring forward tonight. We do have a member from Costco here, which he will give a short presentation over what they plan to do. Our Matt Schlitt will go ahead and give a short presentation, as short as we can, on something like this, of what we plan to do on the remainder of the development as well. But here to answer as many questions that you have, I know there's a lot of moving pieces to this hall, and definitely want to make it right.
Ms. Pennington, can you give your address for the record as well?
I'm sorry, one, Matt Pennington, 7200 132nd Street, Oldham Park, Kansas.
Okay, thank you.
All right, evening again, Matt Schlitt, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. So, as Matt had said, the Drake team's here, Costco's here, traffic guys here, I got all sorts of support, so any questions you have, we can again, try to answer. So now we are 291 and 50 Highway, southeast side of the road. So Oldham Village that is under construction and praying for warm weather to keep the pavement going down in the next few weeks. On the west side, we're on the east side now, looking at a development of a mixed-use site. We're going to break this into two phases. So in a month or so, you'll see everything south of Bailey, so today, we're going to see some pictures that show stuff south of Bailey, but what we're talking about in this application is everything north of Bailey, east of 291. 69 acres generally sitting in there, the old Pfizer building's there, for some people who've been around Lee Summit long enough, the old Calmar site. There's 13 mixed-use lots, retail spaces, sit-down restaurants, drive-through restaurants, apartments, and some recreational spaces. Just like on the west side, there's a number of improvements that will be necessary. Traffic signals, 291 improvements, Bailey Road improvements, shared use path improvements, extensions across the city. The InVision LS overlay is part of this development, so again, we'll talk about that as it kind of goes on with staff, and we work with staff, we think, to create a project that fits in most of what the criterion ideas were. So the Ignite Comp Plan shows this area as a mixed-use development, so everything kind of in that corridor has always been identified as being something in a mixed-use variety, as we've seen many things come across through the years. Currently, the site is zone P-mix. If we're sitting at 50 Highway, 291, kind of looking south off to the east side, or the far side of the site is kind of the site, the old Calmar site, so the ramp to 50 Highway is back over in here, so you're seeing it's basically an undeveloped piece of property on the northerly end of the site. This then is kind of on the ramp on the east side of 291, looking south, so again, this is the old Calmar building, this will be the future home of Costco as the development continues. Now we're on the south side of the site, that's the existing Pfizer building, or Zouetis as it sits now, and then the development to the north and the vacant ground, again, that you see throughout the primary consistency of the rest of the site. Again, I've kind of highlighted in orange what we'll be talking about in about a month or so that'll be Phase Two, we're primarily focused on everything north of Bailey. There are 13 lots kind of scattered through this site with a mixture of Costco being our number one lot at the north end, and then a mixture of uses that we'll go through on each of the sites as we go down here. So what I'll do at this point is I'll let Steve come up and talk about Lot 1, kind of go through Costco's intentions, and then I'll come back and talk about the rest of the sites, talk about some of the things that we've done through that site, and let him go to that side of it. So, Steve, if you'd like. This is just my slide, yours are all buried next to it, if you just keep pushing.
Just the arrow, okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is Steve Cross, Costco's real estate development director. My address is 1955 Raymond Drive in Northbrook, Illinois. Really happy to be here tonight to give a brief presentation on Costco and explain our plan and a little bit more about Costco. For those of you who don't know Costco, it's rare people who don't know Costco, but I'll just kind of fill in some highlights related to that. You know, Costco, when we come into development- come into developments, I mean, we become a destination. So, we do drive developments. You know, Matt's got a great development going here, but certainly, we bring in, you know, a destination, we bring in people from further afield, and that does drive the kind of ongoing development of surrounding properties around us. So, that's a great benefit to the community here. We also bring a lot of employment, significant employment, about 175 to 200 employees, about 50 and 50 are part-time versus full-time. Employee counts will grow as the sales grow, and we provide excellent pay among retailers, one of the highest, if not the highest, wages in the retail industry here, as well as tremendous benefit packages, even for part-time employees that do 23 months, sorry, 23 hours after six months working there. So, and we also recruit locally. I mean, that's one thing, we will transfer people to the warehouse, but we also do recruit from within the community. So, the other benefits are obviously providing local jobs, we curb retail leakage, keeping sales in the community, generating taxes, and significant disposable income within the community here. So, let me switch to the site plan. And as Matt mentioned, we're at the north corner here. Our main, our building is at the northwest corner. We're looking at about 24 acres here. The building is about 166,000 square feet. We have, the receiving dock is on the southwest corner, four docks there. The main entrance to the warehouse is at the southeast corner, and there's only one member entry and exit there, so we limit access to the building through one location, which is great for security. We have a gas station located at the southeast corner of the site here, and that's going to have, initially, it's going to have 24 pumping stations there. So, there's 12 pumps with two fueling stations at each one, so that's 24. And then, just off to the right-hand side, you'll see that there is a grade-in expansion area, which would increase that to 32 pumping stations. We do have, we're proposing here 888 parking stalls, which is where we need to be in terms of member security and safety around the lot there, just based on the historical parking counts that we're seeing across the country, that this is, this is really the number we need. It's about 5.35 spaces per thousand, which does exceed the city's ordinance of five spaces per thousand. One thing to notice about the fuel facility, it's just selling gas there. We don't have a convenience store, there's no other sales there, so it's just members-only gas. So, this is obviously the whole facility is a members-only facility. Based on the site plan that we've got, we've got the three entrances in. I know there's the traffic study that's been reviewed and approved by the city there with some recommendations. You know, we do have the main entrance to the traffic signal, which Matt will probably explain more about with the infrastructure that they're building for us. And then, we have the gas entrance and exit over here to the right. We do have about 30 to 40% of our members will go and get gas, and then they go into the warehouse. So, obviously, some people will exit right away, others will go in and do continue shopping there. The access through the site is basically just distributed around. We have the parking on the east side and south side of the building. So, it's, this is actually our model, how we like to lay out the buildings with member access sort of concentric around that entry in the corner of the building there. As far as the landscaping goes, I know we do have some modifications in there related to the screening of the dock area. On the west side, we have a compactor located on the west side, so there's no open enclosure, open trash enclosures. But what we don't want to do is build a, we'd rather not build an actual wall around it to screen it. So, on the west side of the dry vial over here, we'll have a heavy evergreen screening along the whole west side of the building for the compactor and the dock area. One of our other modifications is the parking lot lights. We're looking at 36 and a half foot high poles. We do that to reduce the number of poles spread throughout the site, as well as the hotspots under each of those lights in order to meet our photometric requirements there. So, that's basically the site. So, I'll just quickly flip through some of the visuals that we have. We've got some perspective renderings here. This is just looking straight at the southeast corner, the member entry and exit. You can see the glass doors right behind there. This is at an angle to the building here. That's just a zoomed-in location here. And on the east side of the building, so this is the east facade, you can unfortunately just see it behind the trees here. This is the tire center. That's one of our accessory uses. We have five roll-up doors there, and they basically just mount, sell and mount tires. You can also buy batteries in there, but currently we're not installing batteries. And then, the facades, the materials that we're looking at here, the south and east facades, we've looked at those, about 60% is about of the, those two facades is ribbed metal panels there, and then we've got some, we've got the glazing, the roll-up doors. We do have masonry, CMU along the base and stem wall, and then we also have the masonry, which on either side of the entryway, and the columns on the canopy area here. And then, this is just a rendering of the fuel canopy here. It's the same fascia material as on the warehouse, so it complements the warehouse. And then, this is just a materials board here showing the different materials that we have. We've got the CMU, the limestone CMU here on the left, which is the material, as I mentioned, on the canopy entrance columns, as well as around the tire center. And then, we have the other CMU, which is this darker brown, that's the base stem wall going on either sides from the entrance there. And then, the rest of it is these two colored metal panels that we use. And then, these are the elevations. You can see how we try to break up the building, because no matter what you do, the building is a fairly long building, five, just over 500 feet long and 300, I think 320 feet wide. So, we can't hide the fact that it is a big building, but what we do is we try to break it up, so it reduces that. So, we've changed the color of materials. On the north side, facing 50 here, we've broken it up into three panels, and then we have these intermediate colors here. And then, we also changed the parapet height as well to vary that. And then, this is the elevations for the fuel facility. Again, similar material. We do have a small hut that is mechanical equipment and a warming hut for the attendants that will be at the gas station there. This is our typical floor plan. I can go over any of that if you have any questions on that. And then, we did look at the sightlines to show that the parapets are screening the rooftop equipment, the mechanicals on the roof there. And then, this is just our colorized landscape plan. Again, we landscape all the islands. There is one modification that we did request, which is to not put the intermediate island every fourth parking rows, just because of the members and what they're wheeling out, that if they go out there and they come across an island down the middle, you can't get between the cars. So, what we've done is just added some other intermediate islands to help break that up. So, with that, I'm able, happy to answer any questions, but I'll turn it back to Matt.
Thank you.
So, now what we'll do is we'll go around the site to the other lots, so we can kind of talk through the pieces of it. So, on the far easterly side of the site, Lot Two and Lot Three are the two blue areas on the right side, which will be the apartment units. Both of the apartment units will have, so the one highlighted on Two will have a tuck under garage, so a parking garage that'll be self-serving itself directly underneath the facility. You can see an elevation view of the apartment lot there. 320 total units. This is the breakdown of the unit mixes and types, and then a mixture of materials across the entire piece. So, we can get into any of those as you guys want to see, but we've got all the different pieces of it. As we move up to Lot Three, is the other apartment on that east side of the site. This one is 250 units with a deck parking garage on the easterly side of it, again, creating all of the apartment parking on-site. 250 total units in this one. Again, there is our unit breakdown, parking spaces, and material list. If you have any questions on that, we can, of course, talk about it. It'll be very similar in qualities and styles to what Drake has already built throughout the community, is currently building on the west side. As we start to look at lots six through 10, six through 10 are a mixture shown in the traffic study on the site plan as being our fast casual, fine dining, high turnover sit-down. So, it's not necessarily your drive-through type fast food, but maybe more of a sit-down and spend some more time and actually order from a menu and have some time that you'd actually sit on the restaurant side. On the west side, we have a number of the drive-through sites that we've gotten approved that we're utilizing. So, this site is attempting to utilize some other users or attract some other users. So, typical building elevation, again, some type of mixture of materials that you can see. And again, we can go through any of those as you want. This is all typical at this point. As we go then down to lots 11 and 13, we're showing these as a strip retail or a fine dining type opportunities. So, again, sitting down on that front side, a different building style, similar to, again, a restaurant style that you'd sit down in, order at, not necessarily drive-through, strip retail that may be, or coffee shop, or some of those other retail spaces that you might have on those areas. Again, a mixture of materials that would be of high quality, similar to what's been developed in other Drake communities. Lots Four and Five, and then 12, which is the green space, Four and Five are intended to be some of the finer dining restaurants. The idea being is creating a sense of community with the apartments, with the walkability from Costco, with the walkability throughout the development, which we'll show, and then a big community space directly to the south. The community space directly to the south has been kind of the pivotal feature of the development, to create a space and an opportunity for people to gather, hang out, and do activities, to sit there and spend some time, maybe while you're waiting to go to the fine dining, or maybe while you're waiting in the area. Or, if you're a tenant in one of the apartments, it gives you an opportunity to connect to one of the trails and have a space inside of the community to hang. And so, then this is the trail network that is being developed. So, it starts to bleed into, again, Phase Two, but again, a continuation of the trail, that is the 10-foot trail that currently exists on the south side of Purcell's. It'll be continued into the development. A trail system will be developed up and along our north-south drive. It'll be connected to one on the south side of Oldham that will connect back to the west side, that connects to that trail that goes along the west side of 291 towards the downtown core area. And then, a network of sidewalks and activity spaces that'll get to the central activity space that we've designed in that site. Landscaping on the south side, so you've already seen kind of Costco's plan. The idea is to start to really landscape and create a fun corridor that creates a lot of vegetation and a lot of breakup of the concrete and buildings and that spaces of it. So, this is what we're expecting kind of on the two different corridors that we'd have. The corridor kind of on the north-south road will have a median that will be landscaped with trees and shrubs, again, with landscaping on either side of it, with the trail on both sides of that north-south drive as you go from south to north. And then, there are portions of the development where there are no medians in the middle, but still be a wider three-lane road section that would allow for some of the turning movements, allow for some easier transactions of moving through the site. Phasing plans, as we start to look at it, we've turned the project now kind of completely on its side. So, Costco is a Phase One with the Oldham Parkway extension on it. Phase Two then is kind of starting to connect that north-south road development of one of the apartment buildings and a number of the pad sites. Phase Three then is the remaining portions north of Bailey Road, and then the last phase or the second phase of the overall development will be everything south of Bailey Road. The traffic engineer is here to answer any questions in more detail, but certainly we can start the discussion. So, from a Costco perspective, extension of Oldham Parkway directly to the east with a signal at the main entry to Costco will be installed. Improvements on the southbound leg to create an additional left turn lane into the Costco. Extension of that turn lane towards 50 Highway to make its storage larger. And then, as we get down into Bailey, another signal installed on the east access point. The access point that is on our north-south road will be a three-quarter, so you'll be able to go right in, right out, and as you're coming this direction, east, you'd be able to take a left, but you would not be able to come down out of it and make a left to go back across Bailey. So, to control some traffic movements on that side of it. Again, as you're starting to see then on 291, you're starting to see the addition of another southbound left turn lane at Bailey and 291. And then, eventually, you will see the extension of a third lane of travel all the way down to Shear. So, if you're driving on 291 now, that lane exists. It becomes a right turn that turns onto Purcell. That will be widened, a right turn lane added, and an additional through lane that will go all the way down to Shear or Thompson Drive where the signal is on that south side. So, again, on that one, Mark is here to answer any questions you might have. And before I leave, this will come more in the second phase and conversations of it, but 16th Street down on that south end is part of this development. We'll go from where it is now, a very unimproved road, to interim road improvements. We'll have sidewalks, we'll have shoulders, we'll have curbs in storm, but that'll be, again, with the Phase Two improvements. But just to talk through some of the developments that'll happen with the overall East Village improvement. So, we did have a neighborhood meeting, and the conversations were, I think, general in nature. Most of them were excited to see a development coming. All of them asked the same question and hopeful that this was the last time. A number of them been to two and three neighborhood meetings on different projects and different ideas for this site, and so they were looking for some assurance that this project was actually going to move forward. So, we've provided them everything we think we can. We've provided them that Costco is a great partner to have, and so we believe this project is actually going to move forward. So, I think overall, from a lot of the neighbors on that side of it, there's not a lot of residential neighbors in that area, there's a lot of businesses that really showed up. Most of them were on that 16th Street side, which again, we'll talk about in that Phase Two, but really happy about some of the improvements for utilities, roadways, some of the improvements for some of the MoDOT stuff that's going to come in that area that's needed, especially for development like this, but also just an overall development side of it. So, with that, we'll stand for any questions you've got.
Thank you. Mr. Soto.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 22.
Exhibit A, 1 through 22 noted and entered into the record.
So, the topic of discussion for today is East Village Phase One, Preliminary Development Plan here located at the south, well, I'll use this one first, that southeast intersection of South 291 Highway and US 50 Highway. So, you've seen this image already before, but I did want to just touch on the fact that before, I wanted to start looking in closer at the phase, at Phase One, just wanted to make sure everyone understood how this piece of the puzzle works as it relates to the redevelopment of that southeast quadrant of 291 and US 50 Highway. So, in the rows here, as Mr. Schlitt had previously pointed out, with the dividing line being Bailey Road that bisects the property, with this being Bailey Road here, the area that we're focusing on Phase One is north of Bailey, and in that future application under separate PDP, that'll be before you hear in the next month or so, is for that Phase Two, and that entails an additional eight lots. But, again, the focus right for tonight is the first 13 lots. So, in total, what we're looking at is the 13 lots, three common acre tracks. In total, we're looking at about 225,000 square feet of total commercial space. About 161,000 of that is made up of the Costco itself. So, the balance of the commercial spaces is composed of 64,000 square feet that's scattered throughout the area south of the future Oldham Parkway extension. So, included in this Phase One are the aforementioned apartment developments, apartment complexes, making, basically, they make up two of the lots, Lots Two and Three on the east side of the property closer to the UP Railroad. In the middle, for the purposes of how I described the breakdown of commercial lots versus residential lots, I'm counting the open space, the passive open space in the middle as a commercial lot, only in the sense that it's not a residential use. But, what we're, as I'll discuss throughout the rest of this application or presentation, is that the applicant, and some of these have already been touched on, with this application, there'll be modification requests for five different aspects of the UDO. So, to provide some context, here you could see the former Calmar site at the north end. You've got the existing Zoetis facility here. At one point, there was another, I believe, close to around 100,000 square foot Pfizer manufacturing facility that is long gone. On the left here, you see again the mix of PMIX uses on the zoning on the west side of the property that mirrors what we are seeing on the east side of the property, which is the subject of tonight's application. That PMIC zoning is nested, yeah, it's nested in amongst just a mix of residential uses as you continue to the west side of Oldham Village. as you continue to the west side of Oldham Village, southeast of this site, primarily, primarily planned industrial to the east, rather the other side of the UP Railroad, and south of Bailey, you do have some existing PI zoning, which will be part of that future PDP application, but remains vacant. And on the north side, we've got the gateway into downtown Lee Summit as 291 South becomes Jefferson Street north of 50 Highway. So the property is identified in the Ignite Comprehensive Plan as mixed-use, a little bit different than the Oldham Village property was zoned as all, or designated as all commercial, but with the mixed-use designation on the comp plan, it does account for the fact that it does make allowances for a mix, be it horizontal or vertical, of residential, possibly industrial, just as a whole, speaking as a whole, mix of commercial, office, retail, industrial, and residential. But specifically, in this application that's before you, there is no industrial uses that are being proposed as part of Phase One. We're just dealing with a couple multifamily residential lots, the big box anchor on the north end, and then again, that mix of office, retail, commercials scattered throughout the rest of the site. The two multifamily units make up, making up the site, you've got a 320s unit apartment complex, we'll call it, here on the south, on the southeast corner, and in the middle, you've got the 250 unit complex on, just immediately south of the southeast Oldham Parkway extension. I want to make sure it wasn't confusing Bailey, Bailey and Oldham, which I probably will. So in total, we're looking at, the development will provide a total of about 2,700 square, I'm sorry, the development as a whole will require about 2,700 total parking spaces. The development will provide about, just a little over 3,100. So these, this is a rendering that you already saw before, and this does provide a breakdown of the material percentages. There'll be some, some of the other building elevations more specific over here, but just in terms of the breakdown of the materials, the gentleman representing Costco had mentioned, the building as a whole is primarily composed of vertical siding. As a whole, when you look at all the sides, just based on the table and the breakdown provided on the architectural drawings, you're looking at about an 85% exterior that is the vertical-ribbed architectural metal panel, as has been mentioned, with a varying coloration to provide some architectural relief and to break up some of those larger wall planes. As has been mentioned, they are using the variable-height parapet walls on all sides of the building to provide some additional visual interest and break up some of those longer, those longer horizontal lines that make up the body of the building. The base, they are breaking up, again, with the use of some CMU block, and they are some using some different color banding to differentiate the base of the building from the middle and the top, which is something that we look for and is recommended and required under our current UDO requirements for architectural design. So at this point, the only known tenant for the development that's been made public and to staff has been the Lot 1 Costco development. So with these elevations before you, the applicant is looking to establish kind of that architectural baseline that, well, that all of the future tenants that make up the remainder of Phase One will be able to kind of draw upon for their inspiration and use as a, I guess, as a guide, guideline or framework as to what the desired architectural theme should be that carries through the entire development. So from here, future applicants don't have to exactly replicate, I mean, there are abilities to provide some variation to what's before you here, but they need to, as plans are provided to staff for review and for feedback, we look to see that the, again, the change of use of materials, varying roof lines, the breakup of the other different wall planes, and just a different type of architectural language that is used on the new buildings would mimic or be similar to those that you see before you here. I do call out here the material palette that you'll see in most of our, similar to what is proposed on the Oldham Village side, you're looking at primarily the use of brick, stone, evis, wood composite, and some metal for some accent points along coping and some of those horizontal and vertical, those horizontal projections used for canopies that'll, they'll provide some coverage to those entrances. The residential architecture, again, you can see here that there is a common use of materials of brick, CMU, stone, fiber, cement panel, and some decorative use of metal. Each of the two buildings that they've proposed as guiding building elevation, architectural representations do have, as you can see, quite a bit of undulation as it relates to the roof line, they use some tower aspects, some horizontal mixed in with some diagonal roof lines here to kind of, again, provide some additional visual interest and kind of frame and accentuate the middle entries, to have most of the architectural embellishments at them, to more easily identify where those main entries are with quite a bit of glazing. So similar to the Oldham Village application, the applicant's desire is to have some large primary monumentation at the borders and the main entry points into development to facilitate wayfinding into the area and to more easily identify the tenants that make up the development. So here you could see that with Phase One, there are three locations for oversized monumentation, one being at the far northeast corner of the development, specifically northeast corner of Lot One for the Costco site, and then at the intersections of Oldham, southeast Oldham Parkway, immediately south of Costco, and the other entry point at the existing connection with southeast Bailey, southeast Bailey Road. This monument mirrors the ones that were approved for Oldham Village, they're both 30 feet in height overall and have an overall structure, square footage of about 312 square feet, and just like the ones in Oldham Village, these will also be multi-tenant panels to be able to provide adequate identification for each of the tenants. Costco specifically is looking for approval of a sign package that would allow for up to six wall signs for their building. So their building isn't quite exactly perfectly square, they do have kind of a chamfered or dog-eared corner where they do have their main entry. So there is essentially going to be one sign on each of the four exposed, or each of your four cardinal elevations, plus the one on the dog-eared entry, over the entry. And the east elevation, the east cardinal elevation will also have an additional smaller tire center signage over the, each of the, over, five overhead bays to more easily identify where that service is provided. Just so, at this point, I'll start getting into the modifications. So the first modification is to the parking lot setback from the public right-of-way. The UDO requires a minimum 20-foot setback from all public rights-of-way, and at this location, to mirror what was approved on the Oldham Village side, on the west side of South 291, is a modification to allow for a minimum parking setback of 10 feet. So part of that is attributed to, or that's primarily attributed to the fact that, similar to most highway furnitures that we run, that we have running through the city, there is an abundance of green space and width along those major highway corridors that provide additional ample buffering between the lots themselves and the adjoining roadway pavement. So in this area specifically, when scaled out, this is just a portion, this is an area here that basically mimics where the future lots six and seven would be, south of the southeast Oldham Parkway extension. So just, I took this snippet here to provide some reference. So the area here, the distance between the property line and the nearest travel lanes at its narrowest point are 40 feet, and from there you could see that the pavement starts to kind of further itself a little bit as you continue to go down, gaining an additional 10 feet or so. So already from the travel lane to the property lines, you already have about 40 to 50 feet. So the applicant, rather than the required 20, which would start getting into more 60 and 70 feet of separation, is looking for a reduced setback of 10 feet, so you still have that 50 to 60-foot range that you see more typical to your standard commercial properties, and in fact, would actually still actually be a little bit more substantial than what you see along your typical arterial roadways. So staff is supportive and recommends granting the modification request for the reduced parking lot setback from public rights-of-way. This one has been brought up a little bit, so I'll touch it on again. So at the southeast corner of the Costco building is where the dock area and the trash and recycling compactors are. And rather than construct the required permanent masonry type of shielding wall from the public right-of-way, what's being proposed rather is double-staggered row of evergreen trees and some additional evergreen landscaping on that 291 side to provide a living screen rather than what's essentially an additional obstacle to circulating traffic, particularly around the dock area where you do have larger vehicles moving in and around that corner of the building. So in lieu of that, the applicant's proposing that additional evergreen screening. Again, staff is supportive of it for the reasons previously cited. The parking lot pole height has been mentioned, part of the goal on the Costco side is, you know, the additional height gives you a little more coverage with fewer lights. On the staff's side, when evaluating this, the primary concern was what impact does that additional height have on any kind of light spillage as you make your way south of Oldham, the Oldham Parkway extension? So Costco would be the only use, all of Lot One is a, Costco would be the only user on the north side of Oldham Parkway. On the south side, you do have a mix of some commercial and you do have some residential. So here, the photometric plan that's provided shows that at the property line, on the Costco property alone, we're getting to no more than about, in the high end, about 1.2-foot candles, and the minimum, the maximum allowable foot candle level on the receiving property on the residential side, which would mean the south side of Oldham Parkway, would be .5. So you can see here that at the property line itself, we're looking at about 1.2, but once you start getting to the actual curb line itself of the, of the street, you're getting down to 0 or .1. So any additional height isn't going to negatively impact any light spillage that may impact the surrounding uses to the south, on the south side of southeast Parkway, Oldham Parkway The next one is the longitudinal, we'll call the landscape medians. So to break up large expanses of asphalt, and this primarily, you know, you're dealing with a lot of the bigger box retail developments, our ordinance calls for a 10-foot-wide landscape island at every fourth row of parking. And just to be clear on what essentially is being asked for is that, let me see if I can get this here. So essentially, the equivalent of what you see here being extended across every fourth row through the middle. Now, as the representative from Costco indicated, that at this particular location, dealing with customers that do, as they navigate their way through the parking lot with a lot of often large and bulky items, the provision of some of these additional landscape medians acts as more of kind of a navigational hindrance to patrons as they make their way to and from the store and back to their vehicles. So in lieu of the landscape medians, what is being proposed with this development is to provide some additional landscaping on the site, so along the periphery primarily, but they are also providing some additional smaller landscape islands scattered throughout the site to help break up some of those, to help still break up some of those longer parking rows, but still providing enough landscaping that they actually meet the minimum landscape standard, and in fact, they actually exceed it. Our typical landscape requirement for a parking lot is a minimum of 5% of your parking lot area should be composed of landscaping. With the provision of these smaller landscape islands and just some of the configuration of these other islands, that they are actually able to provide 6.6%, so they're actually providing about 33% more interior landscaping than normally required, than what the minimum standard is. Also, they're also, you can see here that they're also providing kind of somewhat of a functional equivalent in that some of the orientation of the parking rows are actually shorter than what you might see at other big-box locations. So by having some of these shorter islands, they're still able to increase the frequency of some of these smaller islands here that provide some of the bordering, we'll call horizontal in this case, drive aisles. So here you've got some canoes, as referred to, some of these islands, that help provide some, a distribution point for incoming traffic here. So all of these will be heavily landscaped. You can see here some additional canoes here, and then they also border here. So all of that additional landscape area is exceeding the minimum standard for the UDO, so staff is comfortable with the fact that in lieu of providing more longitudinal median landscaping areas, they are beefing up additional landscaping along the periphery as well as internally. So this area has been mentioned, it sits partially in the Lee Summit Arts and Entertainment subarea of the larger Envision LS area. So the Envision LS area was established across 2016 and 2017 as part of, as part of an exercise to help guide the future development of this area. After Adessa had gone, knowing that Calmar had gone, the production in the footprint of the old Pfizer, now Zoetis facility, and all of the acreage that opened up to provide some opportunities for redevelopment at this significant intersection of two highways, being 50 Highway and 291 South. So at the time, staff was tasked with, we'll call it a visioning exercise of what that development could be, and that was kind of done in conjunction with a proposed development of the Grove, which was a little bit more of a lifestyle type of center that had some kind of more urban aspects in terms of how it was going to be developed with more development brought up to street lines with more zero setbacks, vertical mix of uses. So it was a visioning exercise, and what we've found now, eight years later, is that the market has not been necessarily responsive to what that type of development was called for as part of that exercise. So what we now have before you is more, somewhat of a more, it's a little bit more of a traditional commercial development, which you see kind of a little bit modern, but the applicant is still providing some of the aspects that you would see with the Envision LS standard. So one of the images that was brought up, and I'll pull it up here, that Mr. Schlitz had brought up, they are incorporating extensive sidewalk system, they are incorporating scattering open areas throughout, you know, this one shows Phase Two as well. But in Phase One, we are looking at this passive open area that's more centralized. We do have landscaped medians that kind of provide more of a boulevard effect and that identify these corridors. There's also the extension and connectivity of the shared-use path through the area. I knew here along the south side of southeast Oldham Parkway, there'll be an extension that runs to, across, across the intersection of 291 to connect to the west side, to then be able to access the shared-use path that provides access from this point to and from downtown area. So there will be pedestrian and bike connectivity through this area, and this particular development will provide some of that linkage from downtown area further south. will provide some of that linkage from downtown area further south. So some of the road improvements associated with this development, I'll talk about them at a kind of macro level. So in general, we're looking at the, we're looking at the extension of Southeast Oldham Parkway. So it currently terminates here at where this line is. So this Phase One development will include that, the extension of that road. The overall Phase One development will then include signalized intersection, which that part will come in immediately with the Costco development. But there will be introduction of additional signalized intersection down at the second, the easternmost access point along Bailey Road. So, you know, the bridge over the railroad starts kind of in this general area. So before you hit the, start hitting the bridge, there will be a signalized intersection Matt Schlisch had already talked about, there's a number of turn lane improvements, particularly at 291 and Southeast Bailey Road, to provide some additional storage for southbound, for southbound movements into the area, as well as some additional outbound turning movements out of the area along Southeast Bailey Road. And then there's also, again, that through lane construction, starting in an area just south of Oldham Parkway and extending down and, down to and through Sheer Parkway further So the neighborhood meeting that was held on September 18th, you know, as was mentioned, as a total of six members, you know, some of the items discussed again were the Zoetis facility, the project timeline, the infrastructure improvements, and the impact on schools. I'm sure there probably will be some folks here from the public that are here to speak on this application. There has been, to my knowledge, there's only been one individual that has specifically reached out to staff to express some concerns on traffic, but beyond that, staff has not been communicated with in terms of any concerns with the overall development itself. So this application does have a total of ten conditions of approval associated, the first five being the modification requests that I previously covered. And the other ones are more site-specific development, some of them standard, just in terms of just compliance with the plan that's brought before you here. And a couple ones that are, one in particular of note, to provide some clarity in the future and also for staff, is condition number eight, that with the PMIX zoning, so PMIX zoning is basically a blank slate, essentially. The uses associated and allowed within the boundaries of a PMIX project are specifically tied to the project that is brought before you. So in and of itself, PMIX essentially is blank. There's, there's nothing in, within the boundaries of that, of that box. So with condition number eight, we are establishing the land uses that will be permitted in, within the boundaries of East Village Phase One. And just at a macro level, they include all of the office and retail uses permitted by right in a standard CP2 zoning district, and does also include, I believe it's five land uses that the applicant went before the city council earlier, seeking a, an appeal to the prohibition of said uses within the boundaries of the Envision LS. And those specific uses are automotive, truck-related uses, retail, big box in excess of 80,000, some car washes, daycares, and drive-through restaurants. So with that condition number eight, we hope that that provides enough clarity to the applicant, future tenants, and then also provides, you know, guidance to staff as to, as to what those land uses are defined within the boundaries of that development. So with that, I will yield any questions you may have.
Do we have any public comments on this application? Okay. Have you all been sworn in? State your name and address for the record, please.
Debbie Giddings, 1015 Southeast Ordner Drive. Lee Summit's Access Management Code is used to view a property's access relative to the street functions and find the right balance for safety and efficiency. This development plan does not have either. The code details specific roadway measurements that will be key to success within the city. A few examples are interchanges, turning and queuing lanes, stoplights, medians, and distance between them. Of course, there are always exceptions, and almost every traffic control and roadway in this plan is an exception, with decreased level of service at the stoplights, shorter distances, fewer lanes, and storage capacity. I'll highlight just a few of the odd ones. The city is requiring the developer to put up $100,000 in escrow to fix the median once it's discovered it won't work. Think Culver Road. A Costco sign placement is to suggest vehicles go north on 291 and not cross lanes going south. MODOT's initial examination regarding traffic was so critical, they were not convinced Costco's interest in intersection spacing would function. Recommendations were made to alter the plans to allow better traffic flow. This circles back to density. There's too much for the space. The roads in the area are already congested. Additional traffic from the west will make it worse. In addition, these apartment complexes are going to have underground parking and a parking garage. How safe is that next to the railroad tracks? Some of these residents will also share two-lane interior road access together. Think sliders. It appears Purcell's intersection will be a nightmare. I've learned the city is requiring a median along, so you will not have access to Market Street. But there will be a Casey's, and you will have that come before you to divide that lot soon. Bailey Road will be severely compromised. It's here, the escrow money is being requested. And if you go directly south and try to get out at that intersection, that's where the U-turn will become effective on Bailey Road. The apartments will likely dump onto Bailey Road as well. School bous, school buses utilize Bailey to go to and from the bus barn. The planned changes are insufficient, compromising safety and efficiency, as I highlighted earlier, a goal in the Access Management Code. I'm sure this will be advanced despite all the inadequacies, both inside and outside this plan. That's just what Lee Summit does. There's still time for changes to be made. MODOT still has to weigh in on their final approval. Hopefully, they will require all road construction to be completed at the same time instead of in phases. Residents are already dealing with a traffic mess. Please don't allow this 291 to be a never-ending construction zone. That certainly will affect everyone's quality of life, as will this development.
Thank you. I forgot to say that we have a, the bell goes off at three minutes. I didn't tell you, the rest of you that, but thank you. Does anyone else have a comment?
Hello, my name's Chad Bixby. I live at 1613 Southeast Willow Road. Believe it or not, a lot of people may not know this, but there's a very small community just south of the Bailey development called Watt Acres. It's a, it's a development that's been there for, I think, over eighty years, and I think most of the residents that live there are about, lived there about forty, fifty years. My wife and I, we've lived there for about eight years now. But it's a small community, and I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that community exists, and there are some challenges that we wanted to bring up. Like I said, most of the community there is a little bit older, so they've asked for me to come and speak on their behalf, not for the entire community, just for the residents that I've talked to about this. One of the concerns that we have is the development of Lee Summit is exploding, especially you take South Bailey, take the west side of 291, and we're a very small community, and we're kind of surrounded by all this huge development. And one of the concerns that they have is, is the commission or Lee Summit looking to expand past South Bailey and really do something like eminent domain to our community? A lot of the members that live there, they're, they're not wealthy, and so that's a concern that they have. So if there's any, because we saw here just recently, the gentleman had a, I don't know, was it image up there, was a blue, that said something, Blue Grove, which actually went into our community? So if there's any sort of opportunity that you guys are talking about, about moving south of that, we'd definitely like to know that. I'm sure you probably can't tell me today, but just keep that in mind. If there is a development that's moving south there, there is a community that exists. Of the residents that I've talked to, we're actually excited about the development. To be, if I'm being honest, being able to walk to Arby's and Kane's Chicken is actually pretty exciting for me. But like I said, some of the, some of the concerns that we have is definitely, you know, we're surrounded, I mean, this community is surrounded by growth, and they're really nervous about what happens next. That's the first thing. And then the second thing is on the construction, obviously, traffic's an issue, which has already been brought up, so I don't need to bring it up. But, you know, there's going to be a lot of construction there, and we just want to make sure, there's only two exits for us. There's one there on 16th Street, and then there's one on Thompson Road. And if the development is, I mean, you, obviously, the one that's on 16th Street's probably going to be used aggressively as they're doing the development side of that. So that just leaves us the Thompson Road exit. And I don't know if you know, but there's a lot of development on Thompson Road right now, too, as that's being developed as well. So the only thing that I'm asking for the commission is just to keep in mind that there is a community there. It's an older community, it's existed for eighty-plus years. And if there is any opportunity to let us know if you guys plan on building even south further than that, I would really like to know that. And then the last thing I want to mention is, I live in this community, but I have never received one letter from, you guys said you had a meeting on the 18th. I'm not a part of that, so if I can get a part of that mailing list, I'd appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would wish? Yes, we do.
My name is Roy Musset. I'm representing the business 16th Street, 16th Terrace area. And the reason I'm representing-
Can you give your address for the, for the, can you give your address for the record, please?
Do what?
Can, can you state your address for the record?
106 Southeast 16th Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the, is one of the, the address. The gentleman I'm representing has no hearing, so it will waste the time for him to come in here. Him and his brothers and his parents, the third generation, has been in this area. Now, the problem is that they've got is, number one, I don't know where it shows, 16th Street comes out, and the state come in and shut that off. You can only go north on 16, off, on the 291. You can't go south. So in order for them to come down 291, go clear down to Thompson, and you to make a U-turn and go to, go up by 16th Street where Energy, Evergy or whatever it is, has a building there, and you go across 16th, there's Jim's Toe, there's the, I can't put it, marble, marble top, tar, car, tops up there, there's all kinds of businesses in them, even Harmon's warehouses out there. So there's big eighteen-wheelers coming through there and everything else. But you guys literally come in here and, I don't, it's probably not you guys, but the state come in and block that road to where they can go south. Now it shows where you're going to come down off of this property, on the 16th Street, where's that traffic going to go? It's going to have to turn around and go back north somehow. Number two, like you said, we need to go, we need to have this thing just set aside until the state comes in and says, all right, what are we going to do? There's so many accidents in that roundabout. I hate to see what the other side, 291M or whatever it's called. I've seen where you're going, you allowed, somebody allowed them, the state, to come in there and take everything but the Perkins Building within eleven feet of it. They had to take down the American flag because of you guys, you and the state. Literally, it had to come down because it was in their way of this fancy roundabout. These roundabouts are not working, ladies and gentlemen. I was on the commission with Blackwell, and I saw the stuff that was going there. School buses are going up on the circle. I literally saw one today come and drove on the circle to, in order to get around. What are you going to do with all the rest of the traffic flow? You've got a major traffic flow, even over the other side of the road where you're putting in that 54th, the city's rec center, and 54th, Chris River and all that. There, where are you going to get all, where's all that traffic going to go? Where's it going to do?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Yeah, I know. Ain't that a shame?
Do we have any more comments? Okay, so I guess we will go ahead and open it up for planning commissioner to ask questions. I guess we'll start down here with Ed.
Have we considered, when we talk about the traffic, when we have these apartments that we want to put in, I believe, Phase One, we're going to have about 570 residents going into those apartments. And we're going to have bus, bus transportation as well as trash trucks coming through to service those apartments, as well as the rest of all the other shops. Do we have, with this traffic study, was all that addressed to, to understand that there should not be any problems as, as the community has already commented on? Because that's a safety issue that I just want to make sure that we're addressing. I'm sure you guys already talked about it, however, I'd like to hear it. Thank you.
Mark Sherfy, 70, BHC Engineering, 7101 College Boulevard in Overland Park. Good evening, everybody. I'm Traffic Guy, so I'll take those questions as best I can. To your question, Commissioner, 570 residential units generates in a peak hour around 230 trips going in or out. Of course, in the morning, it's typically out, and in the evening, it's typically in. So those numbers of vehicles are a part of the traffic study, as is every lot in Phase One and Phase Two, with Phase One, of course, being Costco. So it is accounted for, for the multifamily. Multifamily generates a lot less traffic than the other uses there, and certainly less than the wholesale retailer does. As far as trash trucks go, that's a part of their preliminary development plan. We have to make certain that they can get to, to where they need to be. That's a part of the PDP process from, from the engineer and not necessarily a traffic component. But that would be city, city code to follow that. So did I answer that okay?
Yes, I'm just looking at the safety side, the safety side about when are we going to be coordinated for when these delivery trucks and, and trash trucks and buses that come through? You know, I don't see that coordination. How, how is that going to be coordinated?
Well, trash is typically set from the housing unit itself, and, you know, I don't think they're typically going to come in, they're going to come in earlier during the, well, it all depends on the route that they're coming from. So I don't know how we coordinate the movements of trash pickup.
Yeah, maybe it's a more vague question than what I'm trying to get at. It's just, I don't, I see that there's a lot of maybe neck buildup that would be challenging for the residents and the, and the businesses there. So I don't have that full picture, and I'm just trying to figure out how that would work with, with safety vehicles, as emergency vehicles, fire trucks, bus drop-offs.
Yeah, so, so as far as when we do a plan or layout of the overall, your fire department takes a look at the layout and identifies traffic, travel routes through the development, especially around the apartments, to make sure that there's enough accessible space that cannot be blocked for allowance of the fire truck to get to. So like on the north buildings, if we start to look at those. There's a travel lane, like on this building, there's a travel lane that's on the south side that doesn't allow for any parking on that side of it. Additionally, there's a drive that goes along the front and the west side and the north side that would allow access for a fire travel to get around from a fire perspective. They talk about then, like a trash truck or that pieces of it, each of the trash facilities, like on an apartment complex, they'll have a space that's identified, like back in here, where a trash truck would come to an internal trash dump, pick up the trash and go away. So like Mark was kind of indicating, typically, the way that that would work is like Costco. Costco has very specific times of when their delivery trucks will come, when their trash trucks will come. Restaurants will do the same thing of identifying when they'll have it, and so from a timing perspective, they'll identify the non-peak operations times-
Non-peak hours.
-for them to get into the facility and not- -for them to get into the facility and not impact their own tenants. And then, like I say, the residential uses, we typically pick locations for trash that are out of the way that the trash truck could get in and out of, not cause noise, not cause issues on that side, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Frazier?
I won't ask about the roundabout because I think that falls under MoDOT. There's a roundabout there at 291 and 50, so.
291 North, the other new interchange is going in up there.
Yes. But my other question is, is simple and it, actually, it's to Mr. Pennington and also to Costco. You mentioned the gas pumps. Are there electric charging stations as well? I don't recall if Costco has one and the apartment complex, will there be provisions for that as well?
Yes. Costco's simple answer to that is no, we're not proposing any EV charges at this location at this time.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening. Dave Olson, representing Oldham East Investors.
Okay.
5481 West 135th, 135th Overland Park. The apartment buildings, we normally establish a number, usually around 20-
Okay.
-that will provide in the structured parking-
Okay, in the structure.
...that's available for use only to-
The residents.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trafton?
Yes, my question's for the applicant, Mr. Schlicht. I know, well, I know Mr. Soto was talking about the setbacks modification you guys have asked for from 20 feet to 10. You know, my concern about that is, like, we're in the phase of this development where you guys could push that back. I would rather see a larger median with more robust landscaping like Costco's proposing up by that. And so I guess my question is, why can't we shift that 10 feet to, to meet that requirement? Like, why do we need all the impervious area for parking, for all that space, those lots six through 11?
So it, it was actually done for that intent. And so what we had done is we'd made sure that along the corridor trunk, we have at least 20 feet and in some areas, larger than 20 feet on that corridor to add that additional landscaping to create that corridor where we're going to be able to add that landscaping and the-
Yeah, I love that.
-the roadway, yeah. And so when we did it along the 291 section, we did the same thing on the west side where it just made sense. There's just so much green space out there and MoDOT does a decent mowing, but doesn't necessarily mow all of it that well. So it was kind of trying to push in some of that green space in that we can take and maintain landscape and put the pieces of it and then push that backside. We left everything along the corridor 20 feet to meet all the criteria. So that was the purpose of it, was to try to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you for that. I do love the fact that you increased the landscaping burn and, because we need more of that in these developments and less curb appeal. And I guess I still don't understand, like, is there a certain number of spots you're trying to get in those lots? Because there seems to be plenty of parking if you're shifting at 10 feet so you can get that same kind of feel on there. Because I'm going to say this, like, I don't think we should count on the 40 feet in the state highway roadway because I'm pretty sure they'll add a lane there someday. And so then here we have highway lanes right up to the edge of the development and you lose that 10 feet that you gave up when you could have put the 10 feet in here in the beginning.
So the 10 feet, if you look at these lots, isn't a consistent, like where we're bellied up to it. There will be more than 20 feet in many locations. This 10 feet also came just because of the odd shape of the lot. So we created kind of the perpendicular side on this side and then we have kind of that odd corner which creates spots that are pinch points down here. So that's really, it's not a consistent, like where the entire run along 291, we're going to be 10 feet off. It was just that there's areas in there that we wanted to come in and we would have pinches that would create a compression of that spot. So we also have looked at MoDOT's future and long-range plans of what that roadway will be and they have more than adequate space that will always have 30 and 40 feet of road right of way out there.
I mean, adding another lane of, what's an average lane now? I don't know.
12 feet.
12 feet, right? So, I mean, they have 40 feet now, they add another lane. I mean, we'll probably all be gone if they had a four, you know, fifth lane in there. I just-
So we're actually showing that 40 foot is up here where the right turn is, where it's actually, they've already widened it for that right turn lane. Down in these sections where we're down here where just the through lanes are, we're probably pushing more like the 50s than the 60 foot of that just lane.
I am still seeing a lot of robust landscaping between the parking lots. I just, it just feels like there's a lot of parking in those lots that we could capture back with and not have the modification for the, the 10 feet. And still, I know you're the expert, that's why I'm asking you. Like, it feels like we don't need, I don't know how many parking spots are in Lot 6, you know, for example, but it feels like that you, you know, you could lose some of those parking spots.
And, and you may. You know, so the idea is, at this point, there's one identified user that is Costco and you see their plan and how detailed-
Right.
...those pieces are in parts. And so on each of these lots, as we lay them in there, we tried to identify what we would consider worst-case scenario, as far as the maximum amount of parking that might need, the maximum building size they might need. In all likelihood, I would agree with you that Lot 6 is going to come in with a few less parking spaces depending on what that user ends up being at that building.
Yeah, even Lot 11, look at all those parking spots. I mean, we don't need all those parking spots. You could get back 10 feet and give me less park. I would rather give you a modification on less parking spots, to be honest, because we know those lots don't get full.
So, so the trick on the parking spaces is there's ratios that are required to go and attract the right user to come in and want to purchase those spots. And so as we go, talk to national development users, you're running into very specific parking ratios they want to see. And so that's kind of where we start with these drawings, is to make sure that that ratio is shown to that point. But again, the, the portions-
Yeah, I know.
...of the lots that are needing that reduction are very limited to just a few spots on those kind of odd shapes.
I mean, isn't the parking lot ratio based on the square footage of the building that's built on the lot?
Based on use, though, as well. So if I have a retail-
Like what's a-
Retail is different than a medical, a medical's different than a restaurant versus a drive-through. Everybody's got a different number based on the user that you get into that facility.
Right. I still think there's adequate parking to not get, to lose the 10 feet. And I know you're basing it all on ratios and there's lots of math in that and I get it and I love it. And I, I just, and I understand why we're easy to give up the 10 feet, but like now's the time to put the 10 feet back in and not lose it because we've got all the space out there. I feel like there's plenty of space to compress whatever you needed to get, to not lose the 20 feet easement and have a nice landscaping burn so that we're not looking at parking lots while we're driving down the highway and we're looking at nice landscaping, so.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate your thoughts about it. I just, you know, I think it would be nice if we could compress the, figure out how to change those lots, but I think you answered my question. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
I think Commissioner Trafton asked what I, basically what I was going to ask. So lots four, five, six, all the way through 13, except for 12, that's the park, I guess. They said restaurants, is that correct?
Yeah, so the intent and desire that Drake is looking at, and Matt can certainly come speak to it better than I can, but is to try to have a complementary use to what is being developed on the western side. So the west side has a number of drive-throughs and pieces that are starting to develop, still opportunities to develop other things over there. But on this side, then, the idea was to set it up for more of a restaurant-style, different type of retail. And, and find some of, like, four and five, the idea is to find a higher-end fine dining that you could have an opportunity to create 12 to become a really fun park area that could be a community space to drive the community and drive that area, be a place to go to.
Okay. And so maybe to piggyback on what Commissioner Trafton was saying, if, once we, once, if this gets approved through city council and we have all the impervious coverage and then the restaurants don't come in and we have lower-use buildings, we've paved a lot of parking lot. And I think, I think that's a lot of what your question was, is-
Well, if someone came in that wasn't the restaurant user, right, they would come in and we'd have to develop a different site plan for them so that if it was a user that did not need that amount of parking, then the parking would get reduced based on the user and the building size that comes in. This was essentially trying to create a space that we could create a good quality traffic study to understand what impacts that would have on the community as well as set up what probably we call worst-case scenario on that side.
Okay. It's just, I-
This is all speculation because you say you don't have any tenants for lots six through 11. And, you know, you may be combining lots six and seven because you got somebody in there that wants a bigger lot because they're going to put a bigger restaurant like a, you know, whatever. You're already bringing Q39, so I'm like happy about that, but I can't think of another one.
I mean, that was, that's a great example, is Q39, right? I mean, we wouldn't have, we would not have landed them without that kind of parking count. I mean, it's similar over there. So it really, these are the types of things that make and break developments, parking counts. And, you know, we've done enough of it in some areas. I mean, you've probably all seen the Miriam Grand Station development on Shiny Mission Parkway and I-35, where I did try to do a lot more landscaping and get more green there with tons of flowers and, and more green space. Well, the users have done so well, now we're in a parking problem and I'm having to extend the parking garage at 46,000 a stall. And so the city and I are working together to extended it for 103 stalls, nearly $3 million for something we all thought was a good idea. Now that, it's, it's, it was a great situation for all because the users are doing well. But thank goodness, we had an opportunity to potentially fix it. In this case, we're not building a parking garage for these users, these restaurants. They have one chance to make it. So I don't take it lightly, lightly as we, we master plan these developments. I think it was really important, if you look at Streets of West Prior, we really wanted to amplify the green space. And so I think Matt did a good job of showing how much more green space is down that boulevard and down the middle. And we've done a, an exceptional job compared to Streets of West Prior. How do we improve our product? Providing 10-foot trails rather than smaller trails and then adding that landscaping buffer. So all those things are thought about as we're putting this whole master plan together. So to us, it was important to, to have that flexibility for that 10-foot.
Okay. I have a question. And maybe I, maybe this was on, maybe I imagined it. I thought there was a conceptual plan for townhomes. Was that on this?
There is, south of Bailey. That's, that's on the-
South of Bailey, okay.
Yes, that's on the, that'll be, that'll be upcoming.
Okay, so this question is for city, somebody from the, well, it's actually about, I guess, do we have anybody from fire? Yep, there he is.
Craig Hill, Fire Marshal's Office.
Thank you. We've, there's quite a bit of density as far as the apartments and then the retail that's, that's proposed to go in here. I'm, I assume that you guys have looked at all this and I, I guess I'm, I'm just concerned about emergency services in, getting into the, to the development and doing what you need to do. I guess if you could comment on that.
We, we have evaluated the, the site plan and it is sufficient. The entrance off of 291 is sufficient enough for the first phase because there's so many lanes of traffic. It's not just two lanes coming in or out. So for the first phase and then obviously for the rest of the phases, they'll be coming in off of Bailey. So the, the access for us to any of those locations, whether it's the apartments or Costco, is adequate enough.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I have a question for, yes.
She knew it was coming.
You knew. Has anybody looked at, or looked at traffic on a Sunday morning when abundant life is getting out of church, like in that area, and analyzed that?
Has anybody ever driven through there? Yeah.
Susan Berry, City Traffic Engineer. That's on the other side, that's on a different application. But when we did Oldham Village, you know, that was, that was looked at. We did counts that would incorporate that. We don't tend to plan for Sunday events because they are, it's kind of like planning for the Super Bowl instead of, you know, planning for rush hour traffic, you know? Your infrastructure would be way bigger than it's needed for just a very short period of time. So we don't tend to plan for Sunday events like a church. Over there on the, both there and here, we did Saturday, which is the peak time for retail area. And so although the counts are in there, they don't include the, we don't look at Sunday specifically for that reason.
I could see it being, I could see it on a football Sunday, everybody going to Costco and getting out of church at the same time and it being crazy there. That's, so that's why I asked. Okay. Do you have questions? Commissioner Grono?
Yeah. It's probably more for staff. So in your report, you talked about some concerns with the proposed right-in, right-out, left-in access point along Southeast Bailey Road. So sorry, at the intersection and you had some proposals. Will you walk us through that a little bit more in depth and why you're now comfortable with it or the proposed solution?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So from day one, when we heard that Costco wanted to come to town, there was meetings that were held at a high level. From day one, we kind of spelled out that that first access point on Bailey needed to be right-in, right-out. That, we never wavered from that. The full access point was always going to be the one right here at the end of the bridge. Bailey is pretty much built out, and this has been planned since we put the bridge in, where we wanted the signal. So from day one, we'd been telling them right-in, right-out. At the last minute, their plan came in with a left-in and we were not 100% comfortable with it. So we put in the stipulation that if we found out that it wasn't working, that I could take out that left-in with the power of the city traffic engineer. And so we put the escrow amount in there so that the taxpayers wouldn't have to pay for that expense if that was needed in the future. I think it was kind of a combination of, it was different than what they'd been telling us. Their traffic study shows that it works, but again, all of the traffic study is based on estimated numbers. We are going to get an updated traffic study after the Costco comes in. And so once that traffic study comes in, we can look at that again and maybe either get more comfortable with it or go back to our original stance. So that condition for the escrow payment is protecting us from the uncertainty. Does that answer your question?
It does and it clarifies it. So thank, thank you so much. Can we also talk about the, the pedestrian and can, I don't know who it's for, sorry? So can we talk about safety in relation to some of the, the walking and how the, the trails are all going to connect together? What, how is pedestrian safety going to go? How are we protecting everyone? Give us all the goods.
I'll start, we'll see where we go.
That's great.
Um, you know, so, so I think, as Matt stated, that the idea and intent of this, as he's continued to do these developments, especially in the city lease summit, is to try to improve and get better. And so the idea is, if you're at Streets of West Prior, you can get pedestrian mobility throughout the entire project, but it's a little ziggyzaggy. So his goal from the beginning was, I want to be able to walk on big wide walkways through this entire development. And so as we did that piece of it, there are 10-foot trails on both sides of the main north-south roadway. Those connect then on the north side of Bailey and the south side of Oldham to another 10-foot trail that will take you laterally. Each of those locations then will get you to a point where you have a signalized pedestrian-controlled, signal-controlled walkway to get across. So at Oldham, at Costco, you have the ability to walk west down towards 291, go to a signal, get across, eventually get to the same trail that will take you all the way to the downtown core. You could also come over to the east and hit a push button and walk across a signalized intersection to the north. As you come to the south then, at Bailey, we have no crosswalk opportunities at the restricted three-quarter turn, but you have your walkway at the signalized intersection where, again, you're going to have a push-button control. Internally then, by putting, as Matt requested, both sides of this, of the roadways to have that trail, it prevents a person from having to kind of zigzag back across. So as you start to walk internally by the apartments, you could have an apartment guy that could walk around the entire apartment unit. that could walk around the entire apartment unit, not only providing the opportunity for walkability, but also giving the opportunity to have kind of an internal trail system that you could go on a walk and you could have an opportunity to get some distance in without having to go and leave the park community, but just meander, meander around and have enough landscaping that it doesn't feel like you're walking in a commercial development, but walking in kind of a community. So, so we think that we've created enough opportunities for people to walk in safe locations to cross through the signals.
Ma'am Chairman, okay. Matt, just got a couple of questions for you. Let's start first with some softballs. I'm less concerned about the 10-foot setback from my fellow commissioners down there, but I would, would like to know from the developer, would he commit to maintaining that state right-of-way in front of his development? I know it's done a lot. I know a lot of developers do that to mow that grass and make sure it looks nice.
Good accommodation.
Because as you said earlier, Matt, MoDOT doesn't quite mow more than-
They don't mow a ton.
A couple of times and I know they're improving it.
We, we are doing that at Streets of West Prior-
Mm-hmm.
Along, um, the, um, exit from, what is it? Eastbound 470 to Prior. And MoDOT does get a little cantankerous, um, getting on their right-of-way. And we can cheat into it, but they do not like us up along the driveline. So there's, there's kind of a barrier there that they mow and, you know, they mow, uh, basically Memorial Day and then Labor Day, right? Twice a year. They'll, they'll brush hog that. But we can and prefer to cheat into that as far as we can. And with Streets of West Prior, um, if you, if you can imagine, there's kind of a drainage swale-
Mm-hmm.
Um, right along the entrance or exit ramp, okay? So that's kind of the dividing line that MoDOT has given us. They don't want us between, uh, the swale and the, uh, pavement, but we can cheat down and, um, mow that more frequently for them. So, and that's what we intend to do here. You know, fertilize it, overseed it occasionally and try to keep it looking as, as nice as we can.
Yeah, it's, it's in our best interest to keep it clean. So I think, yeah, we can, we can do what we can.
And I, I think Susan may have a little help for us because Susan took care of that.
I can't speak to Streets of West Prior, but I do know 291 along this stretch, um, all those businesses do mow in front of their yard. So since, um, since this is also 291, there might be something different with an interstate that MoDOT is less willing to let somebody mow it. But yeah, they don't mow frequently. And so I know the businesses on 291, they like their frontage to look nice. And so they just do it and I haven't heard that MoDOT has an issue with it. As long as you do it in a safe manner, I don't think they have an issue.
Yeah, and I think if, if they approach MoDOT and be like, hey, we'd like to maintain your right-of-way, I'm sure MoDOT would be more than happy to let someone do, as long as you do it safely, follow their rules. But like you said, it's in your best interest because it makes your, because like, I mean, just like Matt said, we know with funding issues, MoDOT can only mow a couple of times a year. And this is just one way to make it look nice and helps the city look nice too. This is going to be a high-end development. I could tell. I think, I mean, I'm not for sure, but it, to me, it kind of looks a lot like what they did across the street from Town Center and Open Park with the, with the inside park, with the multi-use. And so I, I see that as what you're looking for here. And, and I think you'll, it's in your best interest to make it look nice and high-end.
Yeah, I, I, and, and, yeah, we're going to. I have, I, you got, you have my word there.
Yeah.
And I have no issue mowing and keeping it clean.
Sure.
I'm super attention to detail. So, um, I think where we ran into a little issue with MoDOT is just off of 470.
Well, it's an interstate, yeah.
So if you look at that, that's, that's really what we're, we're talking about. Nothing on, you know, on Prior. It looks clean on Prior, so, and we'll do the same.
Perfect. Real quick, before you walk away, any chance that you've been trying to talk to maybe a grocery store that's got some sort of trading in it? Because this seems like a perfect location for a, a grocery store of some size that can serve a lot of the clientele that is inclined to use apartments and high-end places. I mean, it would be a great location. I'm not trying to do your business.
Seems like a perfect location, yeah.
Yeah, same. That lot down there that, that's the bottom. All right, um, one more question and you can, you can probably go. And this is really more for Costco. I may or may not have a Costco card, so we can go from there. But, but I do know, and I've been to the one in Independence quite a bit, the one off 40, um, that gas really backs up into the parking lot quite a bit. And so I'm kind of wondering, and Matt, if you want to bring up the, if you want to bring up the site plan, um, and, and I don't know, and, and you have numbers for, for the amount of, uh, customers that you have for gas. You know how quickly, I think this has got more pumps than what you have in Independence. You do have that Extra Bay is going to add four more pumps. Are, are you comfortable that cars are not going to back up onto that side street to get in there? Because, you know, Matt, when I was looking at this, I was like, can you take it, could you take that entrance down along the backside of the detention, put the tension across the front and try to give a little bit more of a path to store vehicles? Or just go ahead and build the, the last pumps in now to get more people through? Because I, I mean, I'm, I don't know, I'm sure you're familiar with, with your operations in Independence, but you have it right now. They have it, they have it, it, it comes out, they've got cones everywhere and it goes all the way down to that nearest entrance. And so, and sometimes it backs up all the way there, you know? And I know we don't design it for the, the peak hours, but Costco's only open from, you know, to 6:00 PM. And so there's a lot, you know, and gases, I think is only open until 7:00 or so, right? Or 9:00, it's a little later.
To 10:00 PM. We do 6:00 to 10:00 PM Monday to Friday. So we've extended the hours. But I think the short answer to your initial question was that we believe that this is, this is large enough. So these are, as I mentioned, this, this is going to have, um, 24 pumps initially. I'm not sure, I, I can look it up and see what Independent has, but, uh, earlier, um, fuel facilities had typically had 12, so we're probably doubling it. But I'm not sure if that one had an ex-
That one may, I think that one may be in the 10 to 12 because I think it's the, the front and the back. And I think they may have four or five, so that would be roughly 12.
Two G3 wide and two deep, so that's, that's 12. So, so this is doubling it plus the, the stacking area is much larger. So I, I don't have the exact number here, but I'm guessing that we have between the, uh, the 24 cars that could fuel at the same time. There's room, I think, for another 40 vehicles back there. So you're talking about 60 vehicles approximately would be able to sit in there inside without backing up onto our service road and certainly not backing up down to Oldham. So, um, based on the throughput that we have, we believe that's comfortable. And, um, and the gas operators would make the decision at some point, they just did that down in Texas where we, we had a similar situation. And they, at that time, they said, based on some more recent numbers, we went with the full-size fuel facility that time. But it depends on the region, depends on the throughput, how much, how many gallons we're selling.
Sure. Uh, you're, I want to say, your price is always right. One last question. A while back, I would say probably four, four or five months ago, we had a joint meeting with the, uh, the, um, city council. We talked about standard building facades. And, um, does Costco offer a range of building facades that they do in certain areas? This one looks nice. I, I think it looks a little nicer than, than the one in Independence. But we're trying to get away from just doing the standard, you know, we don't want a standard McDonald's that comes in and just looks like the McDonald's you find anywhere else. We'd like it to be a little nicer. Does Costco have a range of facades that they can offer communities and, um, different places where you can maybe spruce it up a little bit more, maybe a little bit more brick with a little more things that, that really falls in line with the business plan? And we understand that. But just something to be more than just your normal Costco? I mean, can you tell me where this lies and what potentially, what movements you have a little, a little nicer? I mean, this is, I love it. I'm, I love it that you're here and I love the location. But, you know, I, I like to see us, you know, we start to elevate a little bit more.
So, so our base building would be all metal. I mean, that would be the typical building. And this is an evolution of, of the standard building. In the Midwest, they're pretty much all the same size, same, same configuration. You know, the loading dock is on the left, the entrance is on the right, the tire center's around the other facade. So the shape of the building, the orientation of it is, is standard. And we have gone to this, um, this, um, I like this actually more pedestrian scale canopy in the front where it's actually a single level canopy there. And then the Costco sign has recessed and we've actually changed it to an angled canopy where it's a 90-degree canopy. It was angled about five years ago, four years ago, then we went to squared-off canopy and now we're back to an angled canopy. So it's got a constant evolution of the actual building itself. But as far as materials go, you know, we certainly look at the base building and then we look at what we can do to enhance it, um, particular regions and things. So what we've done here is added that masonry on the columns on the entryway there. We've, we've increased the height of the stem wall down here on the, the right-hand side where the tire center is. We have the masonry around it. And then we do, uh, there are, you know, the, the two colors, I mean, they're fairly standard colors, but we vary how we design it and how we mix it. So we do that to an extent, um, where we can. But the, I do want to point out, as far as like the building itself, I mean, this is a very sustainable building. That's one of the things that we're proud of is that, you know, being that it is a metal building, we have the insulation. It's all 80% recycled material. It has higher efficiency than masonry. I know older buildings, you might go back 10, 20 years ago, certain areas, you might see a lot more masonry or even the tilt-up concrete. Obviously it doesn't have the same kind of R values as what we have here. So we're able to reduce one of the rooftop units by using this pre-engineered manufactured building and it can go up very quickly. So reduces the time, you know, labor on-site and stuff like that. So to, to, it's kind of a long-winded way to answer that, that we have designed, and I always like to say that I like to design the building for a community. We didn't just pick one up and go, okay, this is it. Each one gets, gets its thought on how we want to build it and how we want to propose it. Because obviously every community has different rules. So we look at this as, this is the Lee Summit building, not just, this is our standard warehouse.
Good. I appreciate the description there. Like I said, um, I, I don't think the time anymore is where we just want your standard. We want you to come in and show us a little nicer level. I believe all of our citizens, uh, should be entitled to it. And, uh, you know, and, and I believe you, that they will be shopping here. So you'll get your money back fairly quickly. But yeah, that's, I think those are all my questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have one more question for you, Susan. When you were, so the traffic study, um, it, you said it was in the, on the weekdays, morning and afternoon or evening. What, what is the impact of, um, the, on the traffic of the, of SCA when they get out of school?
So, um, we might, I might have the traffic engineering. Usually we do from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. I think they get out slightly before that, but they're, they're also, they're not as large of a volume as PM rush hour traffic. And so although they are a big rush, they're still less than a PM peak.
Okay.
Do you want to add anything? SCA is on the west side. He didn't do the study on the west side. That was a different consultant.
Okay. All right, I was just curious.
And I don't know the times for dismissal there. I mean, a lot of times the schools could be 3:30, 3:50, somewhere around there. So the peak time for the weekday peak is 4:45 to 5:45. So what you'll have, anything that's coming from that west side would kind of extend that from that direction, from, from, from things to the west. Certainly not impacting the east side, uh, as much since, since that school is west there. And then the peak time in the morning is 7:15 to 8:15 AM. Uh, so typically this elementary, those schools come in a little bit later than that, but I don't know for sure. We didn't take a look at that. Saturday noon is, is the, the peak time on the weekends. So we did take a look at that. So did not look at Sunday on the church, but we have Saturday noon very well analyzed.
Okay.
The only thing I'd add is on the west side, if you recall, some of the things we are doing is Drake is doing improvements to Purcell's. And so Purcell's is going to get a median, Purcell's is going to get an additional right-turn lane out of that facility. So from SCA, abundant life and all of those facilities on the west side, their biggest impact will be the improvements that are being done currently in that phase of development. So that intersection of Bailey or of Purcell's and 291, we'll see its improvements now, which should start to alleviate some of those peak times that you're talking about for the abundant life discharge or Summit Christians deal too. So-
Okay.
Some of those improvements will be there.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am Chairman?
I have one more question for Mr. Soto. I think it, I think it's you. Can you pull up, um, the comprehensive plan, um, the map? I want to look at that for a minute. Is there, is there one that's, can you do one that's bigger so I can see the, further south?
Oh, further south?
Yeah.
I have to get my laptop, but you've got one.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to look at it for a minute.
Oh, just look at it?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It answered my question. All right, Mr. Tuzinski.
Yeah, one more question for, um, Susan. Didn't want to call you Sue, God knows.
Thank you.
Ter. Can you just tell me, so I, I know 291 South is probably signaling and are connected all the way south. Is, is there going to be any improvements at any of these signalized intersections due to the improvements with, I mean, any timing changes? Any, I mean, it's all part of it, right?
Improvements to MoDOT system?
Yeah, like to, to changes to their signal timing to, I mean, they're always going to prioritize 291, right? So is there going to be any different timings changed for the side roads because of, you know, of like the Costco exits and, and that?
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna interconnect our signals to MoDOT signals so we can kind of work together.
Okay.
I believe MoDOT uses, they, they use Operation Green Light to coordinate their signals on 291. So there's always the possibility that the city can add our signals into OGL. We have some of our signals over on Prior and Chipman in OGL, so there's a possibility. We just have to see if it's needed or not.
Is there any, I, I didn't get through the, the study enough to know. Was there any recommendations in the study for any signal timing changes?
Uh, it was a condition in the TIA that they were interconnected. As far as timing, I can't say they, MoDOT's going to prioritize 291. And that's why they got to put their input into this study because any backup from this development backs up onto 291.
Yeah, okay. And then 291 backs, so if it's, yeah.
And then it backs up to 50, yeah.
Perfect. Thanks, Susan. Appreciate it.
And this, I have another question for the city. Can someone speak to the concerns about the eminent domain on this, at 16th Street, the subdivision there?
Yeah, so at this point, there are nothing, no active applications, no active conversations in that area with regards to eminent domain or any future development that are, is on the horizon.
But that is part of Lee Summit, right?
That is part of Lee Summit, correct.
It's just a subdivision.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add one thing to that. 16th Street is considered an unimproved road. And so when the Phase 2 of PDP comes in for that area, um, south of Bailey, we will have 16th Street improved to include curb and gutter, uh, storm sewers, sidewalks, that kind of stuff. So it will be an improved facility. But that's all part of the development. There's no, there's no intention of taking additional right-of-way or eminent domain south of there.
Okay.
Well, related to the, I know, Sue, that you don't have control over what MoDOT does to control access to 291 there at 16th Street because that's, I mean, that's not in our purview. It's their decision. And is that, is that part of, you know, what that connector road is that they're taking down to 16th Street in the development? Is that part of that plan to push the traffic up to Bailey?
So I do know 16th Street was closed for safety reasons. For a very long time, that was the highest location on the high-hazard crash list. So that's not all crashes. That's crashes that result in fatalities and serious injuries. That's crashes that result in fatalities and serious injuries. And so that was a problem for many, many years before it got shut down. So that was a safety improvement. It will not come back because they're trying to space out their signals along 291. So yeah, any north-south road that the developer puts in helps out with the fact that you can't go left out of 16th Street, and you can't make a left in southbound. So yeah, any of those internal roads help that circulation since that access isn't
Any more questions? All right. I guess we will close public hearing, and then we can start with comments from the commission. We'll start with you, Mr. Earrington.
Yes, I think it's going to be great for the Lee Summit, for this to come in. You answered all the questions. I appreciate the presentation and all the answers, and I think it's a great movement in Lee Summit, so thank you.
I appreciate the collateral that's provided as well. I also like the fact that you've incorporated green space in the development. We don't, you know, we've gone back and forth and had a lot of comment, but the fact that you've got green space in the midst of retail as well as, as the residential, the multifamily residential, I think, to me, that speaks volume. And one more thing, I would also appreciate the walking space and the walking trails around there. So really looking forward to it. Costco, of course, but we feel a lot of questions around what's, what is the development going to look like? You know, is it going to have green space or not? That sort of thing. Or is it going to be, you know, cookie cutter, if you will? But again, just appreciate the walking space and the walking trails and the green space and the connectors, too. Thanks.
Yes, I too really appreciate all the work that you guys have done at Drake to get, bring this project to us in Costco for you guys to be an anchor. I think it's going to be amazing over there and a nice continuation of what's happening in that part of town. I appreciate it very much. I very much appreciate the increased landscaping burns and landscaping and 10-foot paths to move people through that area and connect to other multi-use lanes for walking, biking, and all that kind of stuff. You know, I still am not happy about the 10-foot easement. I'm actually going to call for a vote on a modification of denying that modification because I feel like it's 130 acres, although I want to give you 300 acres. I keep saying 300 acres. It's 130 acres, which is a lot of land, but not a lot of land. And we want that land, you know, for something like this. And I may be on an island by myself, and that's fine, but I feel like it's a conversation we're having as a community, as with council, with commission, around having landscaping burns and bigger burns and bigger, and not just budding up our development next to the roads. So that's what you're looking at instead of looking at nice areas. And you know what I'm talking about. When you drive through other communities, they're doing this as well, so this isn't anything new. But that's kind of where I'm at with that, so I will call for that vote.
I really like that Costco is looking to come to Lee Summit. I think it makes it a great cornerstone for this part of town. I would love it if we could get retail in Lee Summit so we could quit going over to Overland Park to do a lot of our shopping, quite honestly. We have the, we keep getting density as far as housing, but there's a lot of that retail that we're not seeing. And I think what I keep going back to is, I know as of the spring of this year, we've exceeded our overall demand, our 2032 overall demand on apartments as far as total supply. And that doesn't mean built. That doesn't mean constructed. It means things that have been approved and not under construction. It includes construction, already constructed, and units under construction. So I feel like in our comprehensive plan, we talk about housing choices, and we are not seeing enough housing choices. We are seeing a lot of apartments. And I just, I can't get behind that piece of it. And I'm not saying that I know of something better at this moment, but I can't get behind that piece of it.
I'm really excited about the development, and the only concerns that I have is just around the congestion and the traffic. You guys know it. You're working on it. You're going to find some solutions. You've put some measurements in place, which I appreciate. I think it's a great representation of how we can come together and work collaboratively together to find a great solution, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the investment that Drake is making on both sides of the highway here. I think we're, we're going to have a great development on the, I guess you'd call that the west side with the removal of all the trucks, and now we're going to have a nice development there. Now on the right-hand side, we're going to have an amazing wholesaler there that's going to be great for this community. It's great that we don't have to go out of our city limits to independence and go to a big box there and pay those taxes there. We can do it right here. And then I also like the fact that it's got a lot of other things coming with it that, again, will hopefully bring people out so that they can, you know, grab a nice bite to eat, but they can do it within Lee Summit. Unfortunately, you know, Commissioner Trafton, I'm going to vote no against your amendment because I don't think it's necessary. I think that's one of those things that, you know, MoDOT always gets a lot of excess right-of-way, and they do it because they can. And it's, I could see them definitely building an median before they build an outside, so I'm not super concerned about that. I love the fact that Drake has said that they will maintain that right-of-way. They'll mow it. They'll make it look nice. Maybe they'll take that extra 10 feet and plant additional trees in it, or additional shrubbery or other things to make it look nice. It's in their best interest to do so. But I appreciate you putting this time in and the effort, and wish you a great project. So with that, turn it back to you. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
The other thing I'd like to add is that we know how, I've never been to a Costco that was slow, that didn't have a lot of traffic going in. So that's definitely a testament to your organization. But the other thing I appreciate is the number of jobs and opportunities that you're bringing to Lee Summit and our community. I think many folks have heard, I've seen, that the turnover for there in all ages and all levels of skills and management, we can certainly appreciate that in Lee Summit. So thanks again.
Okay. I think we are ready for a motion. And Commissioner Trafton, do you want to go ahead and make it?
I think you have to make the motion first, and then we change the amendment after the motion.
Oh, because we're changing the amendment?
Yeah, so I would recommend, as we've talked about in the past, if you have the main motion to recommend approval and a second, and that's on the table, and then you consider a secondary motion, which would be modification on whatever particular items you'd want, second on that motion, action on that secondary motion, then back to the main motion after you've amended.
Which one do you want to do? You want to do the second one? And you want to do the first one?
Sure.
All right.
All right. Madam Chairman, I move to recommend approval of application PL 2025-207, Preliminary Development Plan, East Village, approximately 130 acres, generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of US Highway 50, or US 50 Highway and South M 291 Highway, East Village Investors LLC applicant.
A second.
Okay.
Chair, I move to amend the...
Main motion to...
I move to amend the main motion, eliminate modification one from the recommendation.
Can we get a second on that one?
Second.
All right. So we're ready for a vote?
Ed Earrington?
Yes.
Sherri Frazier?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
No.
Jessica Grenau?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
No.
All right. The motion has passed with the modification.
Yes, that was, that was the motion just on the modification. Now you're back to the main motion.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
And I'm assuming that's what everybody was, they knew they were voting on just the amended, the amendment at that point. Okay.
Yes. So now we'll vote for it with, and state just, we don't have to state that amendment again, do we? We just say that it's been amended?
Vote on the motion.
Yeah, so now, so that, that was a four to two vote?
It was four to two.
Yeah, so the secondary motion passed. Now you're back to the main motion with that secondary motion having passed.
Okay. So does someone want to make a motion for that?
I think we already have a first and second.
You've already made that motion, so now you're back to the main motion, and now it's time for a vote, discussion, if you'd like, or a vote on the main motion.
Maybe I need to discuss it.
Or any other modifications.
Okay. We're ready for a vote.
Okay. Ed Earrington?
Yes.
Sherri Frazier?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
No.
Jessica Grenau?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
All right. So it has passed. Okay. Let me see what we have next.
Madam Chairman, or Chairwoman, according to Section 11, Article 5 of the Planning Commission bylaws, no new items are to be had or heard after 9:00 p.m. unless the commission agrees. So if you guys want to hear the final item, we'll need a motion to suspend that rule.
Can someone, I think we should just do it because we could have a very busy December schedule as well. So can somebody make a motion for that?
Madam Chairman, can we, could we do a special session to just go the UDO? I mean, if anyone would be willing to come in on another Tuesday or something, we could...
The potential is there. If the chairperson would call that or three members of the board can request that, it would be staff's preference to go ahead and knock it out tonight so we can move forward.
I'm fine, whatever.
Okay. I just need a motion to suspend that rule.
Madam Chairman, I move that we suspend the rule as stated by Shannon.
Can we get a second?
A second.
All right. So can we get a vote?
Ed Earrington?
Yes.
Sherri Frazier?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grenau?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
All right. So we have application PL 2025-283, Unified Development Ordinance, UDO Amendment, Updates to Development or Requirements in Review Processes pertaining to Article 2, Applications and Procedures, and Article 14 Administration, City of Lee Summit, applicant.
Do you want any swear or anything?
Yes, you do. Do we have everybody that wants to speak on this application to stand up and be sworn in?
I promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, Doc.
This will go fast. It's just about an hour. So you'll be fine. Yeah. I'm going out with a bang. I'm going to make you guys stay until 11:30 or so. Or at least until someone tells me what the score of the football game is right now. Where is my presentation? There's 50, but as we know, I usually go and tell it through like a story, right? So some of them are really fast, and some will stay on for about half an hour or so, but it'll be good. So tonight, we're excited to be here to talk about continued housing discussion for implementation of our goals from our Ignite Conference of Plan for Housing Choice and Housing Diversity. And these are also continuing discussions that we've been having with City Council and CEDC as well. And some direction that we received from City Council, which started back in June, believe it or not, when it was warmer outside, even though it's pretty good today. But in June, the City Council, we met with them, and we're talking about opportunities in our UDO, and it was from their original direction of for staff to look through the UDO and see where can we make some process efficiencies, where can we do some more things administratively reviewed to cut down on the number of meetings and the length of time of the review processes for developers. And while most of this is going to be on housing and residential, there are some areas that we're recommending going to discuss tonight that will be for all, excuse me, development types, residential, commercial, or industrial. So we have these two bucket areas of UDO opportunities, and we've been talking with the CEDC and having great work with them and direction. And so we're here tonight on the review and process areas. Spoiler alert, you know, we are working with the CEDC on some zoning areas, too, and just had a great meeting and discussion last night. But tonight, we're focused on those areas on the left, and so that's the review and process pieces of this. So always like to start with what our review process is, as you all know best, because you see most of our projects that come in the door. But we start with concept plans through preliminary development plans and zonings, then if folks need modifications, revised PDP, excuse me, which is a preliminary development plan, extensions if needed, variances, and then filed development plans and plating up to the building permit. And this whole process does not include permitting itself, but the whole process takes around nine months, give or take, just on average. So with the discussion tonight on the areas that we're recommending for some updates, we went ahead then and are going to share these with you in order of how they would come in the door for our development process. So the first is concept plans. So what is a concept plan? I think we had one a little bit tonight, like a partial, right? So concept plan is just that. It's conceptual in nature, and it provides just an overview of what could happen. That is an opportunity of flexibility in our code for developers and property owners who want to just get the property zoned, because it really helps with marketing and advertising that area and their property that they have, or they want to zone it so that they can help finish contracts and things like that. But they just don't know who the exact tenant is. And property owners have a right to the zoning for their property, and so they don't have to know. We're very lucky, we often know. But having this flexibility built in the code is a great thing. It does not replace the PDP or the zoning process. It just adds an extra little step, but also gives that flexibility if folks just aren't sure of all the details quite yet. So the submission requirements are supposed to be very conceptual in nature, but there's two areas that we find a lot in talking with developers on, why don't people use this option more often? And a couple of the main reasons are, in our code right now, we do require that total square footage of commercial and retail development be provided with a concept plan, and that the elevations with materials and colors be provided, too. Well, that kind of takes away from the whole idea of letting them have some flexibility because they aren't quite sure of those details yet. Because how, if you know this information here, you're probably just going to give us a PDP, because why go through this extra step then? So this presents some difficulty in people not really wanting to utilize this. And so, again, we had some examples tonight. We had an example recently, too. This is Ovation. Let me see if I can pull up the laser pointer here. So this is Ovation Residential that came in several months ago, and they came in for a zoning, and the area in blue was their concept area. They knew it was going to be for multifamily or higher density, weren't exactly sure, didn't have an exact, you know, specifics and everything in mind, but knew that they wanted that to be higher density. But they did know the details on these other portions here that are in green. So when they came in, in order to do this and provide this concept area, they had to provide the square footage and the architectural elevations, even though it was really uncertain, and they know it was going to change. And that's very, very common. Most of the people, when they do come in and they provide this, it's a guesstimate, and it does change by the time the PDP comes in. So we did a little bit of research, oh my gosh, here we go, did a little bit of research, too. We only found two other cities, somewhat local, Anexa and Chesterfield, Missouri, that have a concept plan avenue. Neither one of those require elevations or architectural information at the time of concept plan. They do require square footage, though. But again, that could be one of the reasons that, at least I know, in Chesterfield wasn't utilized quite as often. So best practices do say that we have that flexibility baked in to be a place of choice for building and development. And again, this is one of those areas for concept plan that would cover all types of development, residential, commercial, or industrial. So we are recommending that we remove the requirement for the architectural and the square footage during concept plan phase, yes. Was that a scratch or a high five or a question?
What does it mean to raise my hand like I'm in class? Sorry. I did have a question for you, though. Why do you believe, and I know you weren't here at the time, but why do you believe that that was inserted, or it was included at some point? Like, was there value to that?
In most cities, if Hector's here, he knows everything, but he already left. It looks like David knows. I'll go ahead and defer.
The question, why the concept plan was...
No, why we wanted square footage and architectural. So when cities do that, they want to provide the flexibility, but they just... but they just, picture speaks a thousand words. And so most of the time, elected officials get that picture, if they can think of it in their head, is if they have some kind of concept of intensity and through square footage. And also, still, a lot of cities don't have architectural requirements. So when they don't, they'll require those architectural requirements even during a concept phase. So that's more than, if I had to bet money on it, that's kind of where, because that's how most cities will do that. So yes. So we're recommending removing of those two things to help promote this as an avenue still. And again, if a concept plan's approved, like tonight, I think a partial one was that you saw, before they can build, they come back through the whole process all over again with full PDP and full details once they're ready to go. So you're still going to see all those items. Were there any questions on this section before I move on to number two? Or concerns or anything? Okay. Chair, do you want me, I can stop at each kind of section to make sure we can talk and have discussion about it if there's questions or?
I'm, which is easier for you if we just interrupt you?
You could, yeah.
That way you don't have to circle back and try to remember.
Interrupt me as we go is totally fine, then I'll pause for a station break too, in between each section to see if there's anything. Okay. So the second area is preliminary development plans. Because after concept plan, if one is done, the next step is the preliminary development plan. You sure I'm right? Shannon's looking at me. So, and we're going to look at the supplemental requirements. And so, right now, a PDP is required, again, for both residential and commercial applications. And this review process takes around three to four months. The fees for a PDP depend on your acreage and your zoning, but are in the thousands of dollars. So this is the nine areas of our code that state when a preliminary development plan is required. And I'm going to go right to here. So the two areas that we're most interested in, so preliminary development plan is required for any type of rezoning, you all see that all the time, right? Or if the PDP changes, you know, significantly, if you're wanting any modification. But the areas we're interested in for possible updates is these number two and number three. So right now, preliminary development plan is required for development of any vacant property in a planned district, or any redevelopment of property. And one area of discussion that we've been having with City Council and CEDC was, what if you just have one or two, even three, single-family lots, and that's all you're doing? Do we really want to have them go through four-month process of needing a PDP and that expense and that cost as well? And especially if you're just redeveloping a property. So we were looking through the code. There is a section of our code that does, right now, allow for the construction of one single-family home without needing a preliminary development plan. And in addition, we also have a minor plat process, and that lets you plat up to three lots, and no more than that. So it seemed like an area for discussion of, we want to help promote and assist home builders and home developers, residential developers, to maybe look at some of these infill, maybe redevelop a couple of those lots, only when it's like, you know, up to just three, just something that really low intensity. So, for instance, we recently had, I want to say it's several months ago at this point, 102 Northwest Orchard, if you all remember that. That, that, they wanted to build this duplex, surrounded by duplexes, already had, you know, the zoning in place. The preliminary development approval process took three and a half, four months for them, and the application fee cost them over $3,000. Then they had to do building permit after that, and then the building permit fees of $19,000. What the recommendation staff has is, is there a way where this did not have to go through almost four months of process before they could pull a building permit? We want to help, again, just promote that redevelopment reinvestment of just this really small, just one or two, or even just three, single-family or duplex lots. So if they were able to go straight to a building permit process, it would have only taken seven days. So what a way to help encourage that redevelopment. So this is what this section of code would look like. Is that for number two, the development of any vacant land already in a planned district? And this is if you don't need modification, you don't need to rezone, you're entitled to those land uses. Then if all that exists, then you could build up to, but no more than three, single-family lots, or three duplexes, or combination of. And the same would go true for redevelopment. Again, but only up to three. You still have to meet all of our code requirements, and you still have to meet all of the building code requirements as well. And so the benefits, again, encouraging development of new housing options and streamlining processes, removing a lot of these areas of time, because time is money for builders and developers, is something that's really on the mind of APA, National Legal Cities, and other community movements for best practices. And some of the other cities that we researched that do have similar kind of processes in place are Kansas City, Missouri, Overland Park, Fayetteville, and Tacoma, Washington. So we did, again, that was recommended when we met with CEDC, and they were supportive of that as well. So the second area on this same list is, right now, in our section of code, we have a list of when a preliminary development plan is required, and it's very specific. And then we also have a list of when preliminary development plan is not required, and that's very specific. And the good thing is, there's a lot of clarity. The bad thing is, when you have two lists, you don't always fit, right? Because life isn't perfect. You don't always fit neatly in one bucket or the other. So, and most cities, when we researched too, they do not have a list of yes and a list of no. They just have one or the other, to avoid this kind of situation. So our recommendation for this section also is simply to add some flexibility for the director to be able to make the call in those one-off situations, so that we can provide better customer service to those, to the residents too. And this, this again, preliminary development plan, this section would be for any type of development that would come in the door. But we just want to have something that we can be like, okay, we need to analyze this and see better which, where, or where it fits. So that's the only other change or recommendation there. And again, all of these help to advance our Ignite Comprehensive Plan goals, helps to increase single-family and duplex development by removing some of the processes and those costs. And it helps to increase our housing stock and diversity. So that was like that second area. Does anyone have any questions on that area? This third one has a little, I think this one and the next one are the ones that have a little bit more to it, that will need some discussion on too. So then after, so let's say your PDP is approved, you might want to make some revisions. We see that pretty often, it happens, it's common. And we see that both with residential and with commercial development. So again, after your plan is approved, a property owner or developer can request to make some changes or amendments to their plans. They're still required to pay the fee. And there's two review options right now. There's a substantial change that we've talked about here that requires the full process, again, with two public hearings, planning commission and city council review, takes around three to four months. Then there's minor changes that are administrative review, which take four to six weeks. So with these changes, what we're recommending is cleaning up this table to improve some readability, because some of the areas, there's a lot of overlap. And we also want to look at, where can we improve or increase some of the administrative review options, which was originally how we started the whole discussion with City Council? So, let me see if the next slide has it, yeah. So here's the areas that we're talking about. So right now, this is List B, this is our substantial changes. If you are a substantial change in anything you're doing fits in this box of 1 through 14, then a substantial change triggers coming back with the two-public hearing process to you all and to City Council. And we were recommending that these areas that are outlined or highlighted here, that those be moved to a minor change instead, up to the zoning district allowance. So for instance, right now, number two says increase density of residential uses more, of more than 10%. If it's less than 10% increase, that's a minor change, and staff reviews that currently already. For number three, it says increase in total floor area of non-residential buildings of more than 25%. If you're increasing the building square footage now, and it's less than 25%, that's administrative review. So these percentages is what's tripping us into the substantial change. And our recommendation is, since we've gone through zoning, and the zoning district tells us what these criteria maximums are, then can we move all of these to the minor change so that staff can review and approve any revision requests up to that zoning district regulations? If it goes beyond the zoning district regulations, and they have to come back through the whole process, and likely even zone to a different district. But since we've already been given marching orders, so to speak, with the city of what zoning district is allowed, that has those predetermined requirements in there. So that was the start of the discussion. Let me give you some examples here too. So right now, was this in Rain Tree, Lakewood, Shannon? Rain Tree. This is in Lee Summit, and so this is a building that was done in 2003. So in 2003, this building is on the, on the upper right-hand side here. So it was 20 feet tall. Longview, that was my third guess. Thank you, sir. So it was 20 feet tall, and what they wanted to do was come in and really update the architecture and give it that more modern look that you have on the bottom of your screen, which I think we all agree, looks really great. And it was approved. However, to do that, it made the building 30 feet tall instead of 20, which still met the district regulations, but it went up 10 feet taller in a 50% increase, and then in square footage, because it went up that taller. So their process was three months long. It cost $3,000 before they could get to the 10-day, 10-business-day building per review. With our recommendation for this evening, the process would have been administrative review, and it would have only taken 10 days. So taking 90 days off of the developer from having to go through process steps before they could build what obviously we all think is a much better-looking building. And one of the benefits to this too, is streamlining these revision processes, is to help encourage people from making these reinvestments and taking another look. And at the end of the day, we get a better quality product too. So we did research, and it's really across the board from what the different percentages are that the other cities do in terms of what can become, or what triggers that substantial change. Some cities, as you can see here, it's any increase at all. Some are maybe 5%, maybe 10% if it's building height. So there's no, like, just typical standard that we were able to find. However, for best practices, again, right now, especially when, even though this would be for residential and commercial, especially to be more attractive on the marketplace and more attractive to developers to build in your community, best practices is to remove some of those process steps and to see where your efficiencies could be, and this, this would be one of them. So, this was a great discussion with CEDC. And from that meeting, they were supportive of the idea and on board with things. But one of their concern areas was, well, what does this mean if it comes to, say, multifamily or a high-intensity or high-density development? And so we talked through that a little bit, that, you know, you wouldn't be able to increase your building height or to increase your building coverage if you didn't meet setbacks, if you're already at your maximum, like, none of that would be allowed. And so what we talked through was, what if there would, there could be some options that we could discuss with the planning commission? And so that's what we have before you, with those one, two, and three boxes. So, am I still making sense so far? Okay. So, instead of just, what our recommendation was, was number one, that anything could be a minor change if you're making a revision up to the zoning district regulations. And that was when we're like, okay, maybe we're okay with this for certain types of developments, but not others. So the other option could be that a minor change would be anything up to that zoning district allowance, but it only applies to the residential districts I have here. The Ag, RDR, RLL, R1, RP1 through RP3. And the reason for those are, those are our lower-density districts that we have. It's also ones that they don't allow the real high intensity, they don't allow like mixed-use buildings, they don't allow high-intensity multifamily or really tall multifamily. And it also wouldn't apply to any commercial or industrial. So that was just one option to talk through tonight, to see if that gives a little bit better feeling about this. Or the third one would be that the minor change could be anything up to the zoning district allowance, but it would apply to any zoning district at all, except for not PMIX. And the PMIX is what is used when you have mixed development uses, you have mixed residential uses, you usually have buildings of commercial and residential. And there's usually a lot more going on in those plans anyway. If you notice, what we tried to do is steer away from calling out a certain building type, and thought it might be better if we instead regulate it and look at what those districts are. Because for instance, multifamily's not allowed in RP2 or the RP3. So that would, and neither is commercial, right? So instead of calling out certain uses, we, you would have it dictated by those districts. But those are the three options that we wanted and needed to get your input on and direction on what your comfort level was, or what your thoughts were, which one you would like to kind of proceed and move forward with us to City Council.
Madam Chairman? I think for me, I think number three, I mean, it's, it's the least restrictive. It allows staff to handle more of these on their own. And I think that's, I mean, that's why we hire you all, and that's why you do a good job. And, I mean, you're the professionals on it.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I actually like two and three, and I'm trying to figure out what the difference is, and I may have zoned out when you.
Let me go back to slide number one, and I'll start all over again for you.
Do not do that.
So, option two would apply only to our lower-density residential districts.
So RP4 and PMIX is the only thing excluded there?
Commercial would also be excluded. Our commercial districts, our PRO districts, our central business district. Yeah, so anything else that would be non-residential.
So three is everything but PMIX?
Three would be, it would allow everything. So it would allow the RP4, which allows multifamily. It would allow our commercial districts as well, and our downtown districts, but it would not allow PMIX, simply because PMIX are typically higher intensity. They got a lot more buildings, a lot more is usually going on, they have mixed-use buildings. Yeah. Just, and we could also, there could be an option four, we were just.
No, I get it. Thank you for clarifying.
My vote is for three.
Yeah, so that's restrictive, so I'd vote three as well.
I'd say three.
I'm good with either two or three.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I lean to three as well. I mean, I'm persuaded.
Okay, great, thank you. So the red line, obviously, in your packet, we provided for you, is what we shared with CEDC. So not knowing which option you'd like, or even if there'd be a 3.1, we just didn't want to inundate you with 10 other markups. So we'll definitely, we'll change that, we'll update that before we go to City Council, so thank you. So yeah, this was, there's other cleanup areas too in this section, because we kind of repeat things twice about traffic and public facilities and things. So this was also an opportunity to clean up and strike out where there was redundancies. But then we'll add in what the recommendation from you all was tonight. And then, same with the other section we just talked about. We'd recommend putting in a safety net or flexibility, whatever you want to call it, for this number three here, to add that any other revisions not included in subsection B and determined by the director to be a minor change, just because, again, we have two lists. And if you don't fit nicely, it's good to have very clear language of, the director can look at it and make that decision and guidance for us. And so, a little bit of a cleaner chart for you all of what minor change is substantial change would be. Everything that's still a substantial change, that, you know, we were not recommending touching or in that second column for you there. So anything negatively impacting traffic, negatively impacting pedestrian circulation or traffic, changes in architecture to a lesser, you know, compatible thing, all those uses, all those things would still stay a substantial, which means it comes back to you all and also goes to City Council. But the benefits to doing what we were talking about tonight with the up-to-the-zoning-district requirements, does reduce the review time from three to four months to two to four weeks, so that's great. And so again, that helps with alignment of our goals in our Ignite Comprehensive Plan, helps us be adaptable with the changing framework for the environment too, and promotes collaboration with developers. So, I can move to the fourth one, unless there's any questions. So, I can move to the fourth one, unless there's any questions. This one's a little easier. So, the, let's say you get a preliminary development plan approved. Well, our UDO has, state that preliminary development plan is approved for 24 months, and within 24 months, you need to submit your final development plan. And if not, then you come back through the process all over again. And the reason we do that is because codes change, things change, you don't want a PDP sitting out there for 20 years, you updated your code 30 different times, and then someone's coming in and building something at a much lower quality of where everybody else would have to right now. So, right now, if you want an extension, you can get one extension, but that does take a month to get. Extensions on PDPs currently require City Council approval. The interesting thing, though, is if you have a PDP, like we just talked about, and it had an amendment to it for a minor change that was done administratively, then when that expires, that's approved by staff for an extension of time. Staff also currently approves extension of time for final development plans and preliminary and final Platts. So the preliminary development plan is the only one that goes to City Council still. And like I said, that takes four weeks as to post, it could be taking just one to two weeks to get it done. Right now, as with anything else, we do a thorough review whenever there's an extension request, we don't just grant it. We look at the UDO requirements to make sure nothing's changed, we look at the development agreement requirements to make sure there's nothing that's going to be an issue or concern, and also any ordinance conditions. And if there are, we bring it to the applicant's attention, and we also make note of that for the City Council meeting. And so, if I fail to mention, I apologize, but, so this is one of those areas, too, that would be for any type of development. But like I mentioned, right now, the process for anyone to get a one-year extension is about a month to get on City Council agenda by the time we do our reviews and then get it on an agenda and packets and everything that go out, as opposed to our administrative authority, which would only take about 10 days or two weeks. And that's how long it takes, again, when staff currently approves extensions for Platts or final development plans. And if something we don't agree to or we shouldn't approve, they can always appeal and they could go to City Council. So, an example, we had prior mixed-use development, which expired beginning of November, they were not making a change to anything whatsoever, and their existing process was they had to wait four weeks to get on an agenda, just to get their one-year approval when there was no changes or anything being made different. So our recommendation would have been just 10 days or two weeks for them instead. And so this is what the language would look like, that just changing from approving authority to the director can administratively approve. And then, again, a denial for any reason, they don't meet any code, or there's a development agreement issue or anything like that, they can appeal still and go to the governing body. Sound okay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. And so cities vary from either the director or just Planning Commission actually being the ones to approve it, but wanted to show you as well, but, you know, Lenexa and Carmel, Indiana, currently the director's in charge of, for those. So, and this is one of the, again, recommended best practices to make our processes more efficient and run more smoother and have some more administrative authority. Okay, modifications, this might be the last one. So when you have a preliminary development plan, and modification's not the change, the same thing as a change, a substantial change or a minor change. A modification is, I'm coming in for a PDP, and I know what your code says I have to do and I can't make it work. It's basically like a variance, right? So, a modification is request to modify any of the requirements in the UDO, and those can be approved currently administratively, some by Planning Commission and some by City Council. And so, the items that can be modified, it includes everything, which is really nice flexibility for developers, but it includes floor area ratios, lot size, your building materials, height, setback, landscaping, anything. So, anyone can ask for a modification. I think we had setbacks tonight, right? And that comes in through that PDP process. So, right now, with City Council approval for the majority of these, it takes three to four months because you're required to go through the whole public hearing process. Last December, you might remember that we did update our code, and we did shift some of the modifications over to Planning Commission. And that went from then three and a half to four months process time to four weeks, which is great. And so right now, currently, as you can see on here, you all have authority to approve parking lot design, RTU, the rooftop unit screening, or buffer locations. And so staff currently looks at, the ones we do are parking reductions during a final development plan, building setbacks, which are, we'll talk a little bit more about later, and then some minor road improvements and building materials to reclassify them. So it's not a lot, but as you can see, a staff approval on things would only be seven to 10 days, whereas you're talking four weeks for Planning Commission and up to four months for City Council. So, an example of some things that could have been done maybe a little bit differently was Lakewood Pool. This was a modification request to a parking lot setback to match an existing parking lot setback. So the existing parking lot didn't meet, you know, the setbacks of the district, it happens, and it was okay when it was built, but they want to expand their parking lot. So to build that and match what's already out there, they had to go through the 90-day process for City Council. Now, the current process, like I said, we updated it last year, so this then could have been done by Planning Commission instead, well, that still takes 30 days. So something of this nature would, staff is recommending that it be administratively approved, so it just would have been a seven to 10-day process. And again, it's for a development trying to make improvements that are necessary to their property that we want to help to encourage. And so these modifications, again, would be for residential, but also any other kind of building, or, excuse me, development type, too. So our research, again, we looked at all our friends and neighbors in the area and a little bit of beyond, from the cities that we know we like to kind of look at and they're comparable. And it's a little bit across the board. I did highlight, or put in red font where you could see, those are the items that either City Council or Planning Commission or staff handles themselves. So it varies quite a bit from city to city on what staff can do and what they have the authority on right now. For the modifications, the best practices are, from, you know, National League of Cities and ICMA and American Planning Association, is all about how can you encourage and promote that reinvestment? So to do that, one of the best ways is to remove the barriers and remove the time constraints, so it doesn't turn folks off from wanting to reinvest and go through this. So here's our recommendation, so everything in red would be new, and basically what we're recommending is, everything we did in December that Planning Commission has authority to approve, we shift over to staff to be administratively reviewed. And so, that will go from a four-week process to seven to 10 days, and it's just for parking lot design, RT, the rooftop unit screening, and location of buffers. So not even the width of a buffer, it's just, say you have, to have a buffer on the south side of your property, but you have to move it because there's detention over there, or there's, like, some other issue that's with the site, so it's just moving and shifting a buffer, it's not even saying to remove it altogether. So we're recommending those become administrative review to help encourage and promote that process. So the code change would be really, really minor, it would just literally, wherever it says Planning Commission has that authority, just changes to City Staff. And then, again, the benefits that we, we just went over and talked about for promoting that flexibility and encouraging that redevelopment. Were there any questions on this section or issues or concerns?
No, we were just debating the taking away our power.
It was the last thing I wanted to do before I left, was to strip you of your authority.
I mean, I think we support it.
Just think your agendas could be lighter if you don't have those things, these items on there, right? Okay. And then, I think now this-
Tonight is a great time for you to say that at 9:50.
9:40, 40?
Yeah.
I think I'm doing okay.
We're supporting you.
Thank you. So what was the last one, this is a really good one. Board of Zoning Appeals, and this is the setbacks that I was talking about that staff can do. So Board of Zoning Appeals hears variances that cannot be approved otherwise through a modification. They're a quasi-judicial board, their procedures come from state statute, they meet once a month as needed, and the review time is four to five weeks, and the application fee for Board of Adjustment is over $500. The bulk of our request to Board of Zoning Appeals is from individual homeowners who need a setback variance because they want to do an improvement to their home. So 34 of our 37 applications since the last five years are for residential properties. And of those, as you can see here, and Hector helped me do some great research and put this together, because he is in charge of our Board of Zoning Appeals, but the majority of these are for setbacks for, they wanted to build a deck or repair a deck, or fix their principal structure. So 27 of the 30, or 93%, were approved. So with almost everyone being an individual homeowner needing to go to Board of Zoning Appeals for the same thing, it's an opportunity to look at our code and say, wait a minute, maybe we need to make some changes here. So here's an example of one. 2720 Bent Tree Circle was a homeowner who wanted to replace their existing deck that was built in 87. Two-foot variance is required and a five-foot variance for the covered portion, and the application was approved at Board of Zoning Appeals, which is wonderful, but that application cost them an extra $500, and it took them five weeks. And so what we're recommending is, it could be staff review, seven to 10 days, and you give us a plot plan, and there's no fee. Because what a wonderful area and section of our code, we really want to encourage reinvestment, especially of our older homes, and for people to put the money back into that and fix those up. And so we don't want to be an impediment to that. And so this is what it would look like. Staff currently can approve a 10%, but not to exceed one foot variance. And so what we're recommending is that that be increased to 15%, but not to exceed five feet, but only to repair or replace existing residential structures excluding multifamily. And the reason for that is, the target audience here is for the single-family, two-family of the homeowners, and those buildings are just built different, where a multifamily building, you're not, if you have a setback change, that's your, you have several acres of a lot, and they got a lot of other things going on, but this is that individual homeowner that's coming in the door that wants to fix up their, their house, and that's our target audience is here. And so it also wouldn't include, like, non-residential or commercial for this one. But since everybody who's coming in is single, is a homeowner, it's a great way to help promote that, helps to reduce those barriers, and we don't want to discourage people from reinvesting, and we can improve that lengthy approval process for them, and, again, meeting several areas of our Ignite comprehensive plan to do so. Was there any questions on that one? So, and I'm under an hour so far, I'm doing good. So, the list of recommended updates are here, this is like the whole grocery list from tonight of everything we talked about, and the number four is highlighted because that was the area where we just needed the direction on what would you like us to do with the minor change versus substantial change, so we did get that direction for option three. So we'll update everything accordingly before we go to City Council. And you made it, thank you. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have questions?
Thank you. What are we going to do without your detail orientation?
Yeah.
Not be here till 9:50 at night?
Yes, thank you.
I'll be around, though. I think you, there was someone who wanted to speak, though, too, so I can step back for a second.
All right. Please state your name and address again, for the record.
Thanks for hanging in.
Debbie Giddings, 1015 Southeast Borner Drive. I will keep this short. I have attended or watched online all the CDC meetings since June regarding the amendments. My understanding, the changes, with more to come, are centered around the streamlining the process efficiency and giving administration a greater role in making changes. The one article in particular that has been highlighted, number four, addressing the substantial and minor changes, the committee did have concerns and asked to see more options on how to proceed in this area. They have not seen the three choices you were presented. I just offer that information to you. The committee discussion was more confusing and related mainly to the multifamily and density. They express discussing this at City Council. You chose number three. Will they see the other options at Council? Many changes are for staff decisions. Currently, the staff is really good. What happens if something changes with our planning department? Every amendment change being proposed was primarily presented besides the efficiency and whatnot to help the builders and developers by decreasing their expenses and speeding up their development process. I'm not sure quicker is better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Anybody wants to discuss?
No.
Are we ready for a motion?
Is this for approval of recommendation to Council? Second, I'm sorry, I asked two things at once.
I think it's yes and yes. This is for recommend-
Approval to move it forward, recommendate to move forward to Council for further discussion?
For their review and discussion and possible approval.
For their review and discussion.
Yes. And they will get all the options as well, and then also with a, with a memo updating them on which option that you all were recommending of those three as well.
Yeah, and they usually watch our meetings.
Yes.
So, I mean, I've talked to several Council members who do, so.
And also, they'll receive the Planning Commission letter that staff prepared.
Oh, right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair, I move to recommend approval of application, I don't know, yeah, application PL2025-283 Unified Development Ordinance UDO Amendment. Don't need to read the rest, do I? Updates to development requirements and review process pertaining to Article II, Applications and Procedures, and Article 14, Administration, City of Lee's Summit, applicant.
Second. Can we get a vote, please?
Ed Yurington?
Yes.
Sherri Frazier?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grunau?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
All right, we are done with the hearings. I know that we have something at Roundtable. I think we're going to miss a certain person. This is your last night, right? With us, yes.
Yes, and I went out with a bang. Thank you all for putting up with that for the last hour, but, yes, I feel like I just got here, and I also feel like we got a lot done and accomplished, but just thank you all so much for, for your support and your collaboration and your partnerships, everything. I have been in public service for 28 years, and so, and been doing the planning work for 22 or so, and Planning Commission is by far, I mean, you all have a really hard job, and, but it's one of the best jobs. You all get to see everything first, you get a ton of work, and you make just such a great impact on the community, and just thank you so much for letting me work with you all, and it's been just such an awesome, fun pleasure. But I will be around. I will be starting in December as Principal at Confluence, Consulting, Planning, and Landscape Architecture. So, we're here in Kansas City, hopefully you'll see me, and whatnot in the future, too, but it's been really awesome getting to know you all, but thank you for everything.
Well, we've appreciated you and have enjoyed working with you.
Thanks.
You really do make planning fun, and even though sometimes I do get annoyed with your detail orientation, I do also love it. I'm curious as to who you're tapping to kind of take the mantle, as far as, like, who are you passing off the detail orientation mantle to, because I think you've done an amazing job of cleaning up a lot of the UDO, and I know you have, it's a team of you guys doing it, so it's really all of you guys working on it, and we appreciate it. But I think we're a better community because of it, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Is anybody awake?
Right. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys for sticking it out and griding it out. Also, thank you for allowing me to set two PRs today, both- thank you for allowing me to set two PRs today, both longest Planning Commission that I have attended, as well as longest Planning Commission that I have overseen, so I do thank you for that.
Welcome.
With that, I have nothing else.
We were trying to take a poll up here as to what it was, like, if we were getting close to it or not.
We're pushing five hours, so that's, that's a good one.
Yeah.
I have one thing you requested, the score is 1427 Patriots.
Yes. She's keeping you up there. I was gonna, Chair, I was gonna give a full hour-long presentation on my two-hour, no, was it three-hour meeting I had at the CEC with the lovely lady in the audience with me, she was there as well, but I'm gonna forego that, there's several things happening, and we'll hopefully have more information about them in December, because several of the items went back to get more detailed information from City, so I'll leave it there, thanks.
You've sat in a lot of meetings this week, a lot, you've had a lot of time. All right, I guess we will adjourn at 9:56, we got in under 10.